Patrick?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Hi. Yeah, can you just let us know when you're gonna go, ready to go live? I think everybody's here.
We are live and I did count, all seven council members are here. We just have one until 6:30.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, I am seeing 6:30 on the clock and I believe everybody's accounted for.
Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the City of Petaluma's regular city council meeting and the Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency meeting. Can we have a roll call, please? Here.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
King.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Post okay.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you very much and we will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. If people will mute themselves, I will lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. I do not believe there are any agenda changes or deletions to the current agenda. I'm seeing the city clerk shake her head, no, there aren't. Thank you. And so we have no reportable action out of closed session today. And so we're going to move directly into presentations. We have two presentations this evening. The first is the annual Sonoma Water Budget Presentation and the presenter will be Lynn Roselli.
Hello, can you hear me?
If we can hear you, yes.
Yeah, good. So I'm gonna try to share my screen and bring up a PowerPoint.
And would you like us to have the council members wait until you are done before we ask questions? Or do you want us to ask as you're going?
Either way is fine with me, whatever works for you. I'm happy to answer as I go or...
Okay, well, I think it would be more efficient if we wait until you do your entire presentation.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, council members, mayor, for having me tonight. I am Lynn Roselli. I am the Administrative Services Division Manager and with Sonoma Water and I'm here today to present, whoops, I'm here today to present the fiscal year 2122 Proposés Budget and Rates for the Water Transmission System. And for those of you that may not be completely familiar with Sonoma Water's functions, we have a number of enterprises, including water supply, water transmission, flood protection for 75 miles of creeks and streams, eight wastewater treatment plants and energy and sustainability that help us achieve carbon-free water. For the purposes of this presentation, we will only be focusing on the Water Transmission System budget and rates. And just one item of note, the revenue that we receive for each one of these enterprises is unique to the enterprise and must be used for the function which it was intended. So it cannot be transferred into the other enterprises. And so it must be used in the fund that it actually is in. So this is the Water Transmission System, kind of the 10,000-foot level. We have up in the upper left, the Mirabelle Waller Production and Collector Wells. And then there are three major, three primary aqueducts, the Santa Rosa, Petaluma, and Sonoma Aqueducts. We provide budget and rates for each one of the aqueducts and the customers on these aqueducts pay the rate and budget that, on that specific aqueduct. And we provide wholesale water to the water contractors. Water contractors in turn provide it to their customers, to more than 600,000 customers in Sonoma and Marin County. Wanted to go over a little bit regarding the transparent collaborative process that we try to engage in every year. It is governed, the budget and rates are governed by the Restructure Agreement for Water Supply that was signed by the water contractors in Sonoma Water in 2006. We begin by preparing the budget internally and then we send it to, send a draft to the Technical Advisory Budget Subcommittee in mid-January. And then we receive comments and input from the Budget Subcommittee in January and February. And today, this morning, we brought the budget and rates, the draft of the budget and rates before the Technical Advisory Committee for a vote. And there was a unanimous vote this morning. And then I do presentations to city and town councils and water district boards in March to make sure that city, that everyone has a better understanding of what the budgets and rates are about and can ask questions and get a better understanding of what we do. And then the Water Advisory Committee votes on the budget on April 5th. And then we take it to our Board for Adoption on April 20th. And I want to thank, whoops, I want to thank Mr. King and Mr. Healy for, I know that you both have been involved with and still involved with the Water Advisory Committee and thank you for your service on those committees. Water Transmission System Activities and Funds, so we prepare budget and rates for the, for operations and maintenance, for sub-funds, and there are four of them, capital funds, and there are five of those, and then debt service funds. On the sub-funds, I just want to point out two things. The Water Management Fund is for the Urban Water Management Plan and we've been preparing that Urban Water Management Plan and it is due to the Department of Water Resources on July 1st. But there will be some ongoing costs into fiscal year 2122. But we will be using fund balance to fund those ongoing costs for responding to questions and working with DWR. Watership Planning and Restoration is for the 2008, whoa, 2008 Biological Opinion, the NIMPs, the National Marine Services Biological Opinion. And then, let's see, so five capital funds. So we prepare a budget for each one of these and we're gonna start off with looking at the capital funds. We have a local hazard mitigation plan and we've identified the vulnerabilities of the Water Transmission System in the Hazard Mitigation Plan. We've completed a few hazard mitigation projects, but there's still more to go. The top four that you see on the screen there are FEMA-funded and will be, they will be active in fiscal year 2122. The last one, the Sonoma Aqueduct Crossing is in preliminary design. We're trying to get the design done so that we can apply for funding. And the budget for just the hazard mitigation projects is 5.4 million. We have a number of other capital projects that are ongoing that will be active in fiscal year 2122, which begins July 1st. And we, I'm, there, there's a full list of all of our capital projects located on page, PDF page six of the budget package. It's also on Roman numeral six if you're looking at the hard copy. So the budget for these other capital projects is 4.3 million. So when you add together the hazard mitigation projects and these projects, whoops, you get a total capital budget of 9.7 million. And for operations and maintenance, we have a number of projects ongoing. There's a cathodic protection project on the Santa Rosa Aqueduct in Russian River Katati Intertie. There are pump and valve replacements and a tank maintenance program. And we are also engaged in a number of studies, including the Regional Water Supply Resiliency Study, which is a collaborative effort with the water contractors. The operations and maintenance budget is 30.5 million. And then on to the sub-funds, we have the activities that will be occurring mostly in the, in the sub-funds next fiscal year include work on the biological opinion. We have the Dry Creek Habitat Enhancement Phase Four Project. The Corps anticipates that it will begin construction of this phase of the project in fiscal year 2122. The water contractors are responsible for a 35% cost share. The Corps is picking up the other 65%, but that is included in the budget for next fiscal year. And we're in the third driest year on record. We're staring down the barrel of a drought. We have a lot of water conservation activities ongoing, water use efficiency programs. We have two Prop 1 grants that some of the water contractors are involved with. And we, we will be getting out the message on the drought and the cost or the budget for the sub-funds is 11.05 million. So when we compare expenditures for next fiscal year with this fiscal year, you can see that the total is approximately 3 million less. And that, that reduction is in part because we recognize that we are in the middle of a pandemic. The ratepayers are in financial hardship and we made a significant effort to try to cut costs wherever we could to keep costs down. We found that we were able to get the most savings out of cutting capital project budget. And then on the bottom there, you can see that we have grants and use of fund balance and bond proceeds. And that has gone down about 7.8 million. I'm sorry, is there a question? No? Okay. About 7.8 million. So when you take the net total amount and you take, so the 59 million and you subtract the 16 million, you get 43 million as the net budget on, for this fiscal year. And for next fiscal year, you get a net budget of $47, $47 million. And so that difference is what is going to be used to generate the rate and the rate increase. And this is how the budget is allocated. This is just a pie chart to give you a visual that shows that operations and maintenance make up more than 50% of our budget. Capital projects are 17%. The sub-funds make up 20%. Debt service makes up 9%. And then we have the 8.5 million in grants, bonds, and use of fund balance to offset those costs. So now we're gonna switch over to the rate-setting process. We've been covering what the budget actually is. And here's the rate-setting process. So we take the budget, we look at the copper, the cost of operations and maintenance, and we divide by the quantity of water sold. The quantity of water sold is prescribed by the Restructure Agreement and has to be the lower of the last three-year annual average water deliveries of the last 12 months. And in this case, the lower of the two is the three-year annual average. And when you do the math, you can see that you come out to a rate of $1,000 per acre foot. It's a uniform rate and it is fully volumetric rate. So when deliveries increase, the rate increase decreases and vice versa. If deliveries decrease, the rate increase goes up. Because we are, in past years, we've had droughts that have resulted in deliveries of about 42,000 acre feet to 44,000 acre feet. And if that were the case, with this current very dry year, we would end up with insufficient revenue to cover the budgeted costs. And that is in part the reason why we weren't able to go lower on our rate increase. And so we wanted to show you how our rates compare in the Bay Area to other wholesale water contractors. We're on the far left, $1,000 per acre foot. Zone 7 and San Francisco Public Utilities elected not to raise their rates this, for the coming fiscal year. But Zone 7 indicated that they would be increasing their rates next year by 6.7%. Contra Costa County, Santa Clara County indicated that they are going to be, they have a draft proposed budget increase of 9.6%. It hasn't been approved yet. It will be approved, it will be discussed and presented in April. So it's not represented here as part of their rate increase. And then Contra Costa County has said that they have a 3.72% rate increase for the coming fiscal year and after that, they, they plan to have another 3.75% rate increase. And so here is a breakdown of the rates, the proposed rates for each one of the aqueducts based on the deliveries of 46,095 acre feet for all three aqueducts combined. The rate increase on each Santa Rosa and Petaluma is 3.47% and 3.43% on the Sonoma Aqueduct. And I direct your attention to about halfway down, there's the discretionary charge. It's the capital charge, which is used to build fund balance for future projects. The water contractors have discretion in choosing what that rate should be. And it can be used also as a rate stabilization tool. So you can either build fund balance for future aqueduct capital projects or you can use, use it to help bring down some of the rate increase as need be. But this gives you a breakdown of what the rates and rate increases are for next fiscal year. And then we just wanted to go over some of the budget and rate reduction measures that we implemented. You know, we started with a rate increase of 6.56%, knowing that that was high, given the pandemic. We, we made some cuts and came down to a rate increase of 4.1%. And then the Budget Subcommittees for Santa Rosa and Petaluma Water Contractors elected to lower their aqueduct capital charge from $27 down to $20 to get to a rate increase of 3.47%. And the Sonoma Aqueduct actually increased their, their aqueduct capital charge to be more in line, to have a rate increase more in line with Santa Rosa and Petaluma and because they need the funds, because they have such a small customer base. So we were able to save about 1.3 million. We decreased capital project costs. We increased use of fund balance. We reduced the Water Management Subfund for the Urban Water Management Plans' rate down to zero. We decreased some labor costs in water conservation. And we implemented these measures because we know that the customers are in financial hardship. They can't pay their rate, rent, they can't pay their utilities. And yet, the water contractors still have to provide them with water. And I am hoping that the coming rescue package and, and other hopeful stimulus will be coming forward and the pandemic will end in the not-too-distant future so that families can, can begin being able to pay the rent and their utilities and get back to somewhat of a normal life. The rate increase on average, when it's passed through, is approximately 65 cents per household per month. So they'd be paying 65 cents per month more next fiscal year. And we recognize that that is still a hardship if you can't pay your rent and you can't pay your utilities. But we felt as though we needed to stick with this 3.47% rate increase because our revenues are, in a dry year with mandatory conservation, we may end up in a situation where we don't have sufficient revenues to cover our budget. And with that, just next steps, the tech, the Technical Advisory Committee voted this morning to recommend the budget and rates. I am doing presentations during the month of March. The Water Advisory Committee will vote on Monday, April 5th. And then we take it to our Board, Sonoma Waters Board of Directors, on April 20th for adoption. And I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you for that. That was actually very informative in the very brief time that you gave it. I think you, you answered this question, but, but my question to you would be that we're be, we're able to keep the rate increase low, which I appreciate and I'm certain that our ratepayers are also appreciative of, by decreasing capital project costs. How long can we do that? How, how long can we delay? Are any of these time-sensitive? And I know that you were saying that you're hoping that stimulus dollars might come in to, to make that up. But are any of these projects that we're delaying potential issues?
We, we, we looked very hard at what we thought we could delay and what we, we didn't feel as though we could delay. Some of them are grant-funded, it are on a strict timeline. And so we don't want to lose that grant funding. But we did delay a couple of projects that aren't as time-sensitive and could be done next year or possibly the year after.
Okay, thank you for that. I see I, we have a hand from Councilmember Healy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Lynn. As your WAC representative, I just wanted to advise the council that it's my intent to support this proposal at the April 5 WAC meeting unless the council wishes to direct me otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up on this item. So I appreciate the presentation and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and so now we are going on to a second presentation. And this is the Kahoots Crisis Intervention Program Kickoff. And this will be presented by Ben Adam Klimmer, but our Deputy Police Chief, Brian Miller, would like to make the general introduction here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Members of council, can you hear me? Okay? Great. For those attending virtually, I just wanted to introduce myself, like the mayor already has done. My name's Brian Miller. I'm your Deputy Chief of Police for the Petaluma Police Department. It's my pleasure to introduce and kick off our Crisis Consulting Kahoots presentation tonight. As a city and police department, I'm proud that we've consistently and progressively leveraged local partnerships as we worked to better resource our staff and our community. Thus far, I've learned that a Kahoots model could serve as yet another invaluable resource for our staff to utilize as we collectively work to improve the types of service and response we provide our entire community, especially those in need or struggling. Not only could such a model improve our service delivery model, but it could also potentially alleviate the need for first responders in certain situations, keeping our staff available for emergencies, still requiring first responder response. It's exciting to have this opportunity to share the presentation tonight as well as our current progress to date, as city staff has been proactively working on this already. Starting in the latter part of 2020, police staff began researching Kahoots models and programs to better understand how they work and how jurisdictions were already using them. In November, we reached out to the Whitebird Clinic of Eugene, Oregon, and requested to meet with them in hopes of learning how to potentially bring a Kahoots model program to the City of Petaluma. In December of 2020, we were able to conduct an initial meeting with the Whitebird Clinic where I had the pleasure of meeting Ben Adam Klimmer and learned of his work as a Kahoots consultant. And in January of this year, we engaged Ben in a professional service agreement, began our work together. And that's gonna conclude my comments and I would like to introduce Ben at this time. Ben of Crisis Consulting, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Brian. And I really appreciate, this is a really cool thing. I've done tons and tons of Zoom presentations and never seen the closed captioning at the bottom for folks who are hearing impaired. And so that's a really great accessibility measure and I think it's really cool. I was really excited to see that one came on. So, thank you, Brian. And my name is Ben Adam Klimmer. And as you mentioned, I consult with cities on developing mobile crisis teams based on the Kahoots model. As you can see, that we've been in conversation for a few months now and have been working on getting stuff, you know, worked on and developed. I run and operate my own consulting group now to help this get going and have been just having a phenomenal time working with the Petaluma City and Police Department and all the social services in town. And through the whole process, I've also been noticing more and more that all my favorite food seems to be made in Sonoma County. You guys have my favorite cider brand, my favorite vegan cheese brand, my favorite, which is Miyoko's. And I've just been like, man, Sonoma County must be a great place. And I'm just loving it. So we'll talk a little bit about Kahoots and the Kahoots model. And I'm sure that a lot of you have been hearing about it and seeing things in the news about it and some of you maybe not. So just to give a little bit of a sense, back in 1989, Kahoots was started by the Whitebird Clinic. And Whitebird is a comprehensive clinic that serves people with low and no income primarily, but also serves the entire city of Eugene and Springfield through the Kahoots program and their crisis clinic. The crisis clinic was the original Whitebird program, just a house where you could come in, you know, see a crisis counselor or you could call on the phone 24/7/365. They've been running a 24/7/365 crisis phone line for, since 1969. So the idea for Kahoots was that they had this crisis phone line and they, they wanted sometimes, they wanted to be able to take that crisis phone line out onto the streets because people would call in and they really wanted to meet that person in, you know, like in the, in the flesh and in the present, but they just didn't have a way to do that. The person didn't have the money to get there or they're just too, feeling too scared or too overwhelmed to be able to come in. And so the idea was, let's have this sort of fourth branch of Eugene's Public Safety Department. At the time, the Public Safety Department included police, fire, EMS, always one department. And Kahoots was integrated into that as the sort of fourth piece, a social service, crisis counseling, part of how that whole system works. I think we think of 911 in the non-emergency system as, as being pretty clear on what they are. But at the time, it was only about four years old in Eugene. And so it made a lot of sense to integrate that in. So Kahoots today, it started out as this sort of 12 hours a day, seven days a week, just a, two crisis counselors. It has now expanded rather significantly with a 24/7/365 in two different cities, Eugene and Springfield, Oregon, which are right next to each other. Their scope of service has grown and their call volume has grown and they're now diverting about 8 to 10% of bulk police calls based from year to year. It's a nationally recognized model. It's a highly effective way to respond to the vast array of requests for service that are not within the sort of traditional scope of police, fire, and EMS. So just a little bit about the model and talk about more precisely what it is, for those of you who might be interested or are not familiar with it. This is a really good image here. This is a picture from the Wall Street Journal who did an article about Kahoots back in 2018 of a really typical Kahoots call. This is my, my friend Christian here and my friend Ashley. Christian's an EMT, Ashley's a crisis counselor. And they're just doing a really basic check on this person who's sleeping on the sidewalk. You know, do they need anything? Do they need water, food? Do they need to go to the shelter, the hospital? Do they need bandage change? Do they need socks? Just trying to find out what they've got going on. It's a non-emergency first response to residents who are experiencing mental health, substance use, and homelessness-related crises. When people are wondering, you know, what is it and how does it work? That's really the very basic nutshell around what the Kahoots model is. And it alleviates a lot of the burden that we've placed as a society on police, fire, and EMS to manage these types of crises. And it really helps to optimize the time that those first responders spend on the, the calls that they're really designed for. It's rooted in public health and it's rooted in trauma-informed care, harm reduction, and, and, and just trying to be client-centered. So the team has, each unit has a staff of two. And here's another photo. This is my friend Manning and my friend Amy May doing, just out there in the field, doing wound care for someone in the back of the van. The crisis counselor is somebody who provides de-escalation, social work intervention, suicide assessments and interventions, family mediations when they're... suicide assessments and interventions, family mediations when they're feeling really overwhelmed or upset. And then the EMT is really what the the kind of thing that makes our model very distinct. And interestingly enough, the EMT was added to the Kahoots model in the late 90s because they were encountering so many types of calls that required wound care or needing to check someone's blood sugar or something like that. And it's really what makes this team super flexible and capable of handling all sorts of situations. So let's say, for example, someone's feeling suicidal and they've harmed themselves, they've cut their arms. Most crisis response teams would respond to that and need to call for the fire department or some kind of EMS services to come and bandage those wounds. With the Kahoots model, you've got it all right in one package. The EMT can just handle that physical side of the of the issue while the crisis counselor is handling the emotional and psychological side of that issue. The EMT also allows us to do a lot of really cool things like rule out medical issues that may be presenting themselves as mental health. So sometimes people can seem as though they're intoxicated or they're psychotic, but really they just have low blood sugar or a urinary tract infection. EMT allows us to figure that out. And then every once in a while, you have calls that go bad, and that becomes an emergency medical health issue, and the EMT can take the lead on those types of things. And the other thing that really sets the Kahoots model apart from other mobile crisis teams is that most often mobile crisis teams require some form of special phone number that you may or may not be able to find on the internet to access them. But the Kahoots model includes the team being able to be accessed through very standard, easy-to-call 911 or non-emergency numbers. Call takers receive the requests. Dispatchers will will qualify and prioritize those requests. And you can see here, this is Eugene's dispatch. These these desks in the front here are the call takers' desks. And that person way up there in the corner, that's the dispatcher that sends out the Kahoots team, as well as other units that that are utilized by the Eugene Police. So the most common type of call is the welfare check. One of the things that we've been doing in in Petaluma already is looking at the calls that the police take on a year-to-year basis that may end up going to a mobile crisis team. And welfare checks are a major part of that. And so far, in my assessment, the welfare checks are very much all can be taken, almost all of them can be taken by a mobile crisis team, which is really exciting because it's a large number of calls. Here's my friend Brenton and his colleague. They're just checking on somebody, you know, who's behind that that wooden barrier, probably just somebody who's out in front of that business that just needs somebody to be checked, somebody to check on them. So somebody sleeping in the park, if somebody not returning phone calls, if someone making vague suicidal statements via text or social media, someone unseen by neighbors with building mail, especially elderly folks, if somebody screaming at no one on the corner. These are all welfare checks that, very simple, nobody's breaking the law, nobody's really threatening anyone, they just maybe need somebody to go check on them. Perfect call for a mobile crisis team, and that's where the Kahoots model really thrives. So there's a fair number of cities who are trying to replicate or have replicated our model. Olympia, Washington, there's the Olympia team there. They were the very first team to duplicate the the model, which is nice. Olympia is almost the same size as Petaluma, so we know that it works quite well in a city of your size. And the next and the first real big city to to try to replicate was Denver with their STAR program, and there's their team there. Other cities, especially in your area, are Oakland, San Francisco, but also Portland, Rochester, New York, Huntington Beach, California, and and more. Our cities are trying to replicate or do something based off of the Kahoots model right now. And those are all in varying stages of 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 being ready to be created. So get a little bit more on to the consulting side. Like I said, I created Crisis Consulting because the demand for creating these Kahoots-style programs has become quite large. And I myself was a crisis counselor on Kahoots for five years. I was also an EMT on Kahoots for five years, or for two and a half years, apologize. So one of the things that you can do when you work on Kahoots is that you can learn to do both roles and be able to work as both a crisis counselor or an EMT. We call them cross-trained people. I was one of those. And I helped establish Kahoots' first-ever training academy, and I've trained more than two dozen Kahoots workers, both crisis counselors and EMTs as well. Training is going to be a huge part of the work in the consulting process, and I'm really looking forward to it. The process for the consulting is taking a sort of three steps. First is assessing the context. And this is largely just sort of looking at the experiences of people who are experiencing homelessness in Petaluma, charting the supportive services that are both going to, you know, be requesting and utilizing the service and then also providing, you know, support and and transport locations and things like that for the service. Also, just listening to the experiences of first responders, making sure that the police and the fire department have a really strong voice in saying, you know, this is what we need and this is how we want to see it done. And then assessing the police, fire, and EMS call data. We'll also be looking at qualified agencies who might be able to to manage the service. And we do really feel strongly that Petaluma People's Service is such a great organization, we think would really thrive with this type of program under their belt. That's based on our early assessment. So, secondly, we're going to do, I'm going to help develop what I call develop the infrastructure. This is just means that we want to get those little small details taken care of before the team gets on the road. And that way, we have stuff taken care of before the team starts working, so they don't, we don't run into a bunch of hiccups once they're out and responding to calls. This is assisting with dispatch protocols, assisting with vehicle design, suggesting some budget guidelines, don't mind my dog, assisting in determining, executing agencies, and then collaborating with those with the agency that's selected to run it, to hire and train, train the teams. Then finally, we'll implement the program, really come up, come up to Petaluma, get my hands dirty, train those teams, assist in creating the policies and procedures of the team, and then it's really important to me that this team that we create in Petaluma will be an excellent team. I'm a rather stickler for excellent crisis and and EMT work on Kahoots. And it's in my best interest to make sure that your team is 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 the top of the line, because that reflects well on me and helps me continue my work. So we've got a little bit on our timeline. Right now, we're assessing the call data. That's actually almost completed. I was, I got a little excited. And we're very close to being done. Great data. The Petaluma Police have been really fantastic in assisting with that. Assessing services and experience of homelessness, we're feeling really solid about that. Meeting with community stakeholders, I've so far met with five critical organizations, and I'm going to be meeting with more in the coming days. And then in terms of developing infrastructure, we've identified the van type and most of what will be the transport locations for the team. Here's a little timeline. Council presentation, that's today, March, with you all right now. Once we select the agency, that's when we're going to bring a budget proposal back to you and for the PSA. And we're going to ascertain supplies. And once all that is all identified and sorted out, we'll be hiring the managers, who in coordination with me, will hire and train the staff with a goal of having our first 12 hours a day of coverage on the ground in July 1. What we're going to do with that is then be able to use those those 12 hours of van time to train the overnight staff. So that that way, we have a really nice and efficient training model to get this all up and running and going really well. So finally, just a little bit of what this might cost and and why it costs that and so on, and some potential funding sources. There is about, we estimate about 1.1 million for a 24/7/365 service. About 84% of those costs are from personnel. There's a few potential funding sources for this, in addition to city funding. One is Kahoots Act, which would, is a bill that's in Congress right now. It was proposed and introduced by Senator Ron Wyden, who's from Oregon. It's co-sponsored in the House by Eugene's representative, Pete DeFazio. This would cover a lot of the costs. We suspect that it will be passing now that the Dems control Congress. And it would probably go into, probably go into service around probably September 1st, when the federal budget year begins. Once that money is allocated through the federal government, it'll be passed on to the state of California, who will then provide grants. And we hope that by having Petaluma set up with the teams, that the state will see that as an easy win, and we might be able to access some of those funds. Public-private partnership is really important as well, can definitely help cover some of the startup costs, which there's quite a few in terms of getting uniforms and and medical supplies and vans and such. And there might be potentially some measure of money out there, we hope. And partnering with other small cities in the area could help create cost efficiencies and and help reduce costs for you all as well. And so with that being said, you know, I really appreciate your time, and I think Peggy had a few things left to say here at the end.
Just going to say that both staff and Ben are available to answer any of your questions if you have questions.
Okay, thank you for that, and thank you for your presentation. It was, it hit a lot of the points. I'm going to call on council members to see if there are comments, and I see a lot of hands up. So let's start with Councilmember Fisher and go to this Councilmember King and Postacay after that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great presentation, Ben. Thank you. Visually, very creative as well. Couple of questions. In looking at the call logs, what would you say the the number or the percentage of the calls that come in that this these teams would be able to serve?
Yeah, we don't have, we're still working on that. So yeah, we don't, we don't have definitive answers to that yet.
Is it, do we have a sense, like 10%, 15% or no sense?
Yeah, no sense yet, but I'm going to be developing through all my interviews and all my work that I've been doing with the with the police, fire, and 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 the social services in the area. I'm going to be writing a report, just consolidating all that information to something fairly easy to to read and and that gives you the information real quick and easy. So when when we know that, then it'll be in that report, and you'll be able to see that.
But Ben, wouldn't it suffice it to say, though, traditionally, that this this model typically takes, absorbs about 10% of those types of calls for public safety?
Definitely, yeah. And and that's, you know, I think that when you've got the team working on all cylinders and they're responding to a wide array of calls and doing, you know, those types of things, yeah, somewhere between eight to 10% is what we can expect.
And thank you, Ben. And Councilmember Fisher, this would, this would be for police and fire, because that would also be our firefighter EMT.
Right, I understand. And so the the $1.1 million a year budget, is that just for one team during the day and one team at night?
That's a, it's a 24-hour service, yeah. So it it ends up being about 12 employees to cover all those hours, 24/7/365.
But I guess I'm trying to get at, is there, is there just one team in place at a time?
There will just be one team on at a time, yeah. So a team of two at any given time. And we also hope to structure the management team to be also a Kahoots team, so a crisis counselor and a crisis, essentially a crisis manager and an EMT manager, a medic manager that, you know, I think in our our hopes would be able to potentially respond to maybe very high intensity calls during the day while they're working as well, just to be an extra cover.
Gotcha. And one last question in terms of your meetings with the community. Are you planning on meeting with the Youth for Kahoots group?
I would love, I would love to do that.
Okay, yeah, she's asking that you reach out, so.
Cool, that'd be great.
Thank you.
I I can say, you know, one of the things that has come up repeatedly in my in my discussions with folks and looking at also the homeless point in time count is that youth, especially utilizing the hospital and also the the difficulty of conflict in the home leading to youth homelessness is one of the main places that I think this team should focus on, which is making sure that they can go to families who are in disputes with with their youth who may end up on the street and be able to mediate those types of things and and help foster some peacefulness there to help prevent some, some, you know, situations that might otherwise be somebody sleeping outside or going to the hospital.
Right, great, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the excellent presentation as well. My question is really more of a nuts-and-bull question about how Kahoots gets involved in a particular call. There was a reference to calls coming into dispatch and then dispatch making some decisions, you know, which way that call is going to go. But are there other, are there other ways beyond dispatch that your organization would have the initial interaction where Kahoots would get involved as opposed to a police officer in a public safety role?
I I would say there's, there's really about three ways that Kahoots will end up on a call. So the primary way is that somebody will call dispatch and request them because that they know that that's what they need, and dispatch will say, okay, that's who we're sending. The second way is that the, based on the call details, it will sound first and foremost like some kind of a police or a fire call. It sounds like some kind of violent or criminal issue, and when they arrive, they realize that it's not that, and they see that it's actually more of a mental health or just some kind of homelessness-related issue. And then they will request the Kahoots team to come and handle it because it's really not, it's not necessarily for them to be there. And then the third way is that Kahoots does work very similar to the police and that they patrol. So they drive around town and just look for things that might need assistance. So, you know, people living on the street who need blankets or people who, you know, just just are needing help of some kind and will go try to, you know, assist them if they if they flag down the team, which happens quite often. I often tell people that working on Kahoots sometimes feels like you're in a parade all day because it's just people literally just like, hey! Eugene, city of Eugene is very proud of the Kahoots team, and 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 so they are very, very happy to see us driving around. They also, people also frequently flag down the Kahoots team for assistance.
Well, good, because this is a city of parades, so you'll fit right in with your parade. Just to follow up on that, you have, over the years, do you have any rough estimates of the percentage of cases that Kahoots gets involved with with the three methods that you've identified? Dispatch, onsite fire, police, a call, and patrolling? Is it roughly 130 each, or is it there some?
No, very, no, we don't have a clear breakdown on that, but it's the vast majority come from the calling dispatch. I would, I would go even as high as 90%. And then the the others, being flagged down, it's probably two to three a day, maybe. And then and then police request Kahoots also probably two to three times a day, maybe a little more than that, and fire too.
And as part of the the rollout, is there any training or with regard to our dispatchers, our current dispatchers, to assist them to identify? This is, these are some, you know, situations, you know, identical identifiable situations that they need to be aware of.
Totally, yeah. And I've actually already met with the dispatch supervisor. She's been provided with Eugene's dispatch protocols for Kahoots, and they're training their their kind of small piece of their training manual that regards the Kahoots team. And we've been already in conversation about what types of calls the the mobile crisis team will be responding to or 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 could be possibly responding to. And we'll be doing more of that in the future with each, with all the dispatchers. And we'll be doing more of that in the future with each, with all the dispatchers.
Good, that's good to hear. And, and switching gears a bit, in terms of funding, one of the bullet points you mentioned was the public-private partnerships. Can you provide a few examples in where you've worked where, where that has come to fruition?
Yeah, definitely. So like a, a good example is in Orange County, there's a potential that one of the foundations at the hospital is going to pay for outfitting the vans, which is, you know, the retrofit of those vans can be kind of expensive and it can be kind of difficult, but it's also a one-time cost. So, you know, that, that's a good example. I think that other places where organizations might be able to pitch into is that there is a lot of, of medical supplies that will need to be purchased right off the bat. And so, you know, clinics, hospitals and things like that that might be interested in helping to purchase those would be very welcome and would help the, the team get off the ground.
Great, I, I thank you very much. I appreciate your time, Ben.
Thank you. Councilmember Postacay?
Oh yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks, Ben, for your presentation. I had, wanted to start, I had a couple of questions first is that you mentioned when we started, when we started 12 hours a day, you mentioned a day shift, but I wondered if that is really going to be a day shift or, you know, I, from the reading I've done on Cooch's-like programs, a lot of the 12-hour programs run from something like 3:00 in the afternoon to 3:00 in the morning, something like that. Is that standard or is, will that depend on some of your research here?
Yeah, I think, well, let's play it by ear a little bit. And one of the things we could do is start off by doing, so the original Cooch's team was 1300 to 1:00 AM. So that, that 12-hour period, we could do something like started at that. And then once the night shift gets hired, we'll shift that down to 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM and, and then shift the night shift over to something. We can play around with it a little bit, certainly. And, and we'll, we'll look at the, the call data for that and make those kinds of decisions as they come up. But yeah, it's a, a great point. And I will say, I used to work the 3:00 PM to 3:00 AM shift and that was good fun. And so, you know, we'll, we'll definitely be, be looking at that stuff.
Okay, and the other question is, you've mentioned partnerships with other small communities and, you know, everyone in the county here or, scratch that, most many people in the county are thinking about programs like this. And I presume that we're, we're headed in a direction to get our own program started first before considering anything like that, but just wanted to see if, if there were any, any talks going on within the other communities right now.
I can actually take that. Councilmember Postacay, we have had some interest expressed by Katati. And, you know, I, I have, I have discussed that with some of my city manager colleagues. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping it becomes a county-wide program. Go Measure O.
Thank you. And I, I think that I have some, I have some dreams around that, but that, right now, they're only dreams.
Well, yeah, if I could make a comment on that, I, you know, I've, in my own research, I've been a little concerned that, you know, the, the entire Springfield Eugene area, you know, in terms of square miles is kind of, you know, similar to just the Petaluma area that would be serviced. You know, that, that we, our population density is not nearly as high. And I was wondering if you had any comments about that as an issue?
Well, I think the, the Springfield team, Springfield's about the same size as, as Petaluma population-wise. And it's also, it's a light, it's much lighter density than the city of Eugene, especially the downtown areas. And, but Eugene, one of the interesting things about that is that the Springfield team is, is pretty boring compared to Eugene, because it's, it's a 24-hour team just for Springfield alone. And then Eugene has a 24-hour team and a 12-hour team, but it's three times the size of Springfield. So it's off the chain. You're like flying from call to call to call stuck in traffic and it's kind of a nightmare. So I, I look forward to the, the more relaxed effort of the Petaluma team that will be much more similar to the Springfield work. But, but I think that, that being said, coordinating with other, other places would actually be out of the, out of the question, especially for maybe like an overnight shift where the call volume is lower.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember McDonald?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm really glad to hear you mention the homeless outreach component. Sort of along two thoughts, what if you have too much business or what if you have too little business? And in that in-between time, you're able to do homeless outreach and that's so critical to this. You know, I, I sit on a, a board that funds some of that work and we're spending over a million dollars on that right now with a variety of different organizations. And the need is so, so much more. But in terms of getting, getting Measure O funds, I, I really think that having several coordinated agencies will be the, the, the way in the door for Measure O funds. I don't think Petaluma standalone has quite enough traction on its program, but it's worth, it's worth the shot at it. And, and I think that Petaluma standing up its own organization first really showed the validity of bringing this, this program into our community. So I was really glad to hear you talk about homeless outreach. What about the very heavy medical cases? I mean, you know, we, we have a bit of an opioid problem and overdose problem. Would Cooch's be first responder to that or would it have capability in those cases?
So when, you know, fire EMS and, and, you know, are, are 100% always the first responders to anything that is, you know, cardiac-related, breathing, you know, trouble breathing, head trauma, all the things that paramedics do that are, and I mean, I mean this seriously, are, are miracle workers, you know, those kinds of things. There is a huge amount of, of medical needs and issues, however, that do not fit under the sort of advanced life support needs. And, and a lot of this kind of stuff is, is rooted in just experience, the experience of poverty, whether that's homelessness or just not being able to afford things like bandages or, or whatnot when you're, where, where you live in your home. And so those are the types of things that frequently get, get given to the, the mobile crisis team. We often refer to folks as super users, people that utilize the emergency room and the ambulance as their primary form of healthcare. And, and so those are the types of calls that a, a mobile crisis team, based on the Cooch's model, will be focusing on in order to help divert some of those things from the ambulances so that they are free to respond to those major life-threatening incidents. But, you know, sometimes people do have, they're, they're, they're high on opiates and they're just kind of being high on opiates, right? Their body's loose and, and they're maybe semi-conscious or something like that. That would certainly be something that a Cooch-style team could respond to. And I also want to, I also want to bring up to you something that, that I think is critical and, and, and that I, I failed to mention, which is that the, the mobile crisis team is really, we're really wanting to make sure that we're not duplicating services. That, that our goal is to, our goal is to fill a gap that is there currently and, and not to necessarily do anything that other folks are doing already. And, and that's, that's the main, that's the main piece is in, and, and in the midst of that, the way we really look at, the way we really look at the, the Cooch's model is that the patient or the, the person that we're helping is, is the hub of a wheel. And the wheel is all those services that you just mentioned, homeless outreach, homeless case management, whether that's, you know, any kind of, you know, primary care physician, housing and so on. Those are the services that are there to, you know, to help move that, that, that client along. And the mobile crisis team is, is there to be the spokes of that wheel. They're both there to try to connect the patient to ongoing services that can really support them and simultaneously support those ongoing services anytime they're in need of some kind of extra support with a patient or a client who's being, who's suicidal or, or acting erratically or something like that. That's, that's really the, the deep-down goal and the, the purpose of the team.
Right, I, I love that model integration. But all, all too often, it's our police who get there first. I mean, they're most available within a city, but, so they're first responder on medical calls and, and, and these kinds of street issues. And, you know, we, we have to move towards getting, if we're going to reimagine our police and redefine what policing is, we need to be able to get Cooch's to the front or EMS to the front.
Well, that, that, I, I can say that I've been the first on scene for a number of different overdoses, largely because I was out on patrol. It just happened to be two blocks, I mean, I was actually the first on scene for a stabbing once, you know, because we were just a block away and we had supplies that we could use to bandage a stab wound on the van. So, you know, that, that kind of work, it, it comes with, you know, as long as you're doing it, you, you'll end up on those types of things as long as you're being proactive. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice Mayor Barnacle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ben, for the, the great presentation. You mentioned smaller cities and the potential for savings from working with small cities. Can you talk a little bit more about how those savings can be recognized? Because in my conversations with some of the new council members from various cities in, in the county, there's a lot of people interested in this and I'm just wondering if there, A, what are the efficiencies and then two, when would the other cities need to sort of join the party so that we actually recognize those efficiencies?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think some of the efficiencies come just in administrative costs. First and foremost, you've got program managers who are now, you know, they're, they're busy, but they can sort of work with the, the two cities simultaneously. So you just, you do save a little bit of money there. And let's say, let's just pretend this is all dreaming, everyone, we're just, we're playing dreams here. You know, let's say you've got like your daytime shifts in, in one city and then in your other city, but the overnights are really just kind of slow. Now, the two of those cities can combine and pay for one overnight team where they're each just paying for half of it. So now you've reduced costs for both, both cities for the 24-hour service and, and you're getting just fine coverage and it's no big deal. You know, that would be a really positive efficiency that you could ascertain as well. And then there's, there's tons of just like little things like, so for example, backup vans, right? If both cities have their own teams and they're both paying for them outright, now you've got to have two backup vans. But if you've got, if they're working together, you just need the one backup van for each. So that just, that just creates another small efficiency. And, and there's little things like that all over the place and where you can just save stuff. You, you save money on EHR costs, you save money on, you know, on payroll and, and all that kind of stuff, because most of that stuff's automated, so now you just have to have one program, one system and, and on and on.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it's, there's a couple of other questions I would like to ask. You mentioned that about 8-10% of the police calls have been diverted in Eugene. And I, I'm just reminded that during some of our town halls and, and other public conversations with our police, we have heard that as many as 95% of police calls involve mental health-associated issues. And so I'm wondering why the diversion is so small, if that is in, in fact, the case?
I, I, I think that the, the primary reason for that in Eugene and Springfield is, and I can't, I would have no ability to speak to you the percentage of, of Eugene and Springfield police departments' responses that involve some form of mental health issue, so I, I can't really talk about that. But I, I do think that a lot of what the police do there are, you know, are, are very much law enforcement-based. So, you know, people who are speeding and people who are, you know, attacking someone or anything like that. And that stuff just, that stuff, especially if it's violence-oriented, aggressive-oriented, that, that sort of starts out that way, that still goes to the police because that's their work. And, and if, if it is, if it does sort of come out that, that during the course of that call, that was originally, the call was, this person is threatening me, they're trying to hurt me, the police are going to respond, they show up and they realize, you know, this is, we don't need to be here. Then the, the, the mobile crisis team can get involved. So that, that is a lot of work as well. But like I said, I, I, I wouldn't be able to give you much other information other than that.
So what kind of?
Madam Mayor, maybe I can help weigh in a little.
Excuse me, oh, oh, yes, okay.
Yeah, I'll try to, I'll try to help Ben out with that. I would say, and I don't have any of the data in front of me, and like, like Ben said, we're, we're working to, to go through our calls and see what would be applicable for diversion into that Cooch's program. It is a significant number. He indicated welfare checks are the predominant calls for service that we're already identifying as being appropriate. It looked like from that initial just off-the-cuff estimates that we're probably potentially looking at about 10% of our overall call volume. I would say, and I, and I don't specifically know where the citation for that percentage of our overall calls being 95% mental health-related, but I would say that we have statistically seen that the majority or a lot of our case numbers that we are taking are resulting in mental health holds or detentions. A lot of those situations require an officer to go to the hospital, take a report. It's a stable situation. There's really not a need for us to be there, but we have to go to the hospital and place a hold and we're out of service for a period of time. I think we had over probably 150 of those situations last year. And I think we had about 1,200 total case numbers for all criminal activity, informational reports and everything altogether. So it, it statistically speaking, mental health holds are one of our most frequently used case number assignments.
And, and just, just for my clarification and the community's clarification, those would be the kind of, of assignments that could be shifted to Cooch's?
Yes, what we're looking at right now, those, those would be applicable. And then even more so, it'd be the situation like Ben's outlining, where there may be individuals in distress that haven't generated a call for service needing the police department's response. And they could proactively be out there and hopefully, hopefully deferring calls for service that even come into the 911 call center.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. The other question I have is that a lot of the examples that you gave in your presentation specified homeless people. And it wasn't my assumption that this is only addressing homeless issues. Am I correct on that?
Yes, that's very astute. About 50% of what Cooch's does is with people experiencing homelessness. The other 50% is with people in their homes. And the critical piece around that is just to remember that this is a mobile crisis response to any resident in the city, which includes people who live on the street who frequently have crises. Because the, the, the very definition of, of how, of what they're currently experiencing means that they often are having medical crises, mental health crises and just general resource crises. And so a lot of the work ends up being with people who live on the street, who are experiencing homelessness. But it's not, it's not only designed for that. It is, it's certainly designed for anyone and everyone throughout the city. I often tell people that when you're working on Cooch's, it's very common to be in the rain, you know, helping someone out of the rain who's intoxicated, living on the street, and get them over to the sobering center or the hospital. And then your very next call is in a 10,000-square-foot house with a teenager who's feeling suicidal and with one of the richest families in the city. And, and, and you span that, that sort of range quite frequently. So yeah, it's definitely, that's very true.
Okay, thank you. Another question I had was that you mentioned that the team evolved in Eugene to take on EMS persons on the team. And I'm wondering, did that position replace EMS or EMTs in the fire department? Or did that increase the number of that kind of service available to the community?
It, it did nothing to replace the EMTs on the fire department. It was, it grew out of a need for a, a physical health response and an, what we might refer to as an integrated health response, understanding that mental health and physical health often go hand-in-hand. And, and so it grew out of the need to be able to address those issues while, while doing the kind of mental health crisis response. And what that then created was a greater ability and a wider greater ability and a wider scope of service.
Okay, thank you. And just to touch once more on the regional aspect of this, I know our city manager is, has been reaching out to the other city managers, and I have definitely heard from other cities, once this has, was got on our, our agenda, that they would be interested in that. And then the current supervisor board chair, Linda Hopkins, mentioned at our mayor's meeting that the county would also like to be involved in coordinating these efforts so that we don't have duplication and we also don't have gaps. So, you know, I think everybody's thinking this is the way to be going. So since we're in on the ground floor, I just think being as free and, and open with information to other jurisdictions, even if we're duplicating it, is, is a really smart idea because I don't feel threatened by other groups taking this. I, I feel that it would make everything stronger for all of us. So.
And, and cahoots, I will say this, cahoots is, and, and the whole model, right? The whole idea is about collaborating together to meet the needs of the client and finding the resources within that person's experience to meet those needs. And I think that it goes the same way with how we approach collaboration to meet the needs within the city as well. Because the, the, the cahoots model is not just about benefiting the person individually, but benefiting the whole community, whether, you know, whether that's the county, the city, the neighborhood. And so I'm, I'm also very, very excited about the possibility of collaboration and, and working together across many different boundaries throughout this whole process.
Well, thank you very much for a wonderful presentation. I think we're all looking forward to seeing how this evolves. So, thank you.
Thank you.
To our city manager and Brian Miller for making this happen tonight. So, thank you. Okay, so now we are going on to general public comment. So I will ask our city clerk if she, she has received any general public comment today.
Madam Mayor, we have three general public comments received prior to the meeting, which are posted to the website with the agenda packet.
Thank you very much. And now I will ask our moderator to, that we will open general public comment and he will make his announcement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the public wishing to speak in general public comment, please raise your hand in Zoom now. I'm about to start a 30-second timer and at the end of which we'll figure out how many people have raised their hands. So I'm starting that now. General public comment, as a reminder, is for items of public interest that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction that are not listed on the current agenda. Public comments are limited to up to three minutes per person. Depending on the number of persons wishing to address the council, time will be allocated in equal shares, totally no more than 20 minutes, subject to the council's discretion. As I mentioned, please raise your hand in Zoom or press star nine if you're participating by phone. Attendees, I'm going to stop that type timer right now. We have 10 hands raised. Andy Inwes, Eric Leland. All right. And attendees will be muted when their time expires or when their comments have concluded, whichever comes first. Speakers are encouraged to be respectful. Threats of violence and obscenity are grounds for removal from this meeting. And again, a reminder, if you're unable to speak during the time allotted, you may send your comments to the city clerk at cityclerk@cityofpedaluma.org. Madam Mayor, with 10 hands raised, that would normally be about two, two minutes based on our past practice.
Yes, two minutes per speaker. Thank you.
So as long as that's the will of the council, that's what we will reset the timer to.
So we'll start with Paul McGavin. Do you want to call the speakers?
I will, Madam Mayor. First speaker is Paul McGavin, followed by Scott Springhorn. Paul, I will allow you to talk. You may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you for my time. We're in 2021, not 1915. In 1915, the first US Coast Coast long-distance cell phone call occurred. AG Bell in Manhattan called his former assistant, Thomas Watson, in San Francisco. 106 years later, it started our meeting today. Lynn Roselli started her first invited communication to the city with, "I will share my screen and bring up a PowerPoint," end quote. And then Ben Clymer, in his cahoots presentation, used a snazzy interactive HTML5 presentation. Both were informative, engaging, and even excellent. They used the most persuasive communication tools available today. See, sharing digital images and even sharing our smiles and our kind eyes, just as the city council members are doing right now, is essential for persuasive communication. During the dubious control of virus national emergency, sharing images and audio via Zoom software over fiber-wrapped cables is the way that the public can safely exercise its right to attend public meetings and redress our grievances to our local government. But this is not happening in the Mayor Barrett, City Manager Flynn regime. No. On their watches, the city of Petaluma unnecessarily and disrespectfully discriminates against the public. We're being treated as second-class citizens. We're being bombed all the way back to 1915 by these officials, only allowing the public to use the equivalent of telephone calls to address our government and public meetings. It's 1915 for the public. That's all we get. Is this necessary? No. I attend meetings in many, many cities across the United States that doesn't disrespect the public like this. This is not kind, not fair, not respectful, and not okay. Frankly, Petaluma's residents, taxpayers, constituents, and voters deserve much better, don't you think? Why are you so clearly treating yourselves better than us? Should you, in a government of the people, by the people, and for the people?
All right, Paul, I'm going to have to cut you off there. Next speaker is Scott Springhorn, followed by Sam Buller. Scott, you may unmute yourself and begin your, your comments.
Thank you. The city has again hired Telecom Law Firm to help write its wireless ordinances. This is a huge risk for Petaluma now and in the future. For over six months, we have been talking about and presenting evidence that Telecom Law Firm is a cell tower developer law firm that services cell tower developer clients, and their biggest service is cell tower development transactions. This again is a huge conflict of interest, yet the city has still chosen to work with them again. The huge risk is that will, is will, is they will do what they do to so many other cities across the country, which is weaving in this bias and conflict of interest into our city ordinances. They're looking out for themselves and their developer clients. We asked the city council to order a formal review by a conflict of interest-free attorney that will look out for our city and citizens. This is, this is the exact opposite of what the city has done by again, hiring a cell tower developer law firm that specializes in transactions to build cell towers. Many other cities across the country have not heeded this advice above and now have weaker ordinances and have small cell towers on every street. Telecom Law Firm is a terrible risk for Petaluma's cell tower ordinance rights, our safety, and our future, no matter what ordinance get written and put in front of you to vote on. City Council, we ask you to take an action to get a formal review of these ordinances that are written and presented by the city staff and Telecom Law Firm. This is the best way to ensure that the job was done right, no telecom bias exists, and ensure that our ordinances are as strong as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Scott. Next speaker is Sam Buller, followed by John Hanania. Sam, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Thank you. The city has hired Telecom Law Firm to help assist them to rewrite their wireless ordinances, even after we have been giving evidence for the last six months about how this company and TRIP May are a conflict of interest, as they are pro-wireless law firms that represent cell tower companies, and that is how they make most of their money. So even after the city knows this information, how can they continue to work with them? This is a giant risk that the city is now taking. The risk is they will do what they did to so many other cities with, which is intertwine their conflict of interest and bias into the ordinance so that it benefits the companies that they represent and does not put the city first. We are asking again for the city to hire a reputable lawyer who is without conflict of interest and is going to represent the city and their best interests to review these ordinances. This is a very simple ask, which should have been done at the beginning. No matter what ordinances from the city staff and TLF are presented to the council, there has to be a formal review to ensure that what has been written is correct, without bias, and is what is best for our city and citizens, not for the wireless companies. City Council, we ask you to take action to get a formal review of the ordinances that are written and presented by city staff and TLF. This is the best way to ensure that the job was done right, and our city and citizens' safety is your biggest priority. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight, Sam. Next speaker is John Hanania, followed by Joseph. John, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Greetings. First of all, I want to say thank you very much to all the younger generation, members of the community who kept asking for the cahoots time after time after time after time. And I find it really disappointing from the city council as a whole and Mayor Barrett not even give recognition for those folks, but yet thank the city manager and Brian. Okay, that's one. At the last meeting, I invited Ken Savano for a meeting to talk to someone who live in Petaluma to talk about issues and never heard anything. On Tuesday, I sent him a message that, including myself, other members of the community would like to have a Zoom meeting or recording meeting to talk about issues that taken place in Petaluma. When, the end of last year, Mayor Barrett started talking about the meeting with a black man and how wonderful it was, but the general public was not participating to talk about their experience and the negative experience. And that is not right. I think, you know, if you go on Petaluma Police Department website, you could see about every time they do something right, it's blasted all over their, you know, website on Facebook. But you don't, you never see anything about, you know, when they're doing something wrong or they mistreating somebody. It's all hush, hush, make it go away. Myself included and other members of the community have filed certain complaints about a certain police officer, which is Brian Miller have lied to me when he told me he's still in duty when I asked him to. And I discovered he wasn't. That's your police department. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight, John. Next speaker is Joseph, followed by Taran Obaid. Joe, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Hello. The city was supposed to work with the Pittsburgh-based Urban Design Associates to facilitate workshops to help the public vocalize and create a transparent process into the decisions being made with the lease of the Sonoma Marine Fairgrounds and Event Center. Over the past year, this work has not been accomplished, and the process seems to have been shrouded under the guise of COVID as an excuse for the city having inadequate staffing. I am concerned that the bias of some members of the city council are getting in the way of doing what is right for the city. A quote from the January 27th, August Courier article, Mayor Teresa Barrett and Council Member Glenn Fisher expressed strong disapproval of the extension, calling the decision potentially financially irresponsible and more that would, I move that would tie the hands of future council members. Barrett said the over, the 50-year lease is the worst contract the city has ever entered into. And she is unconvinced that there are any financial advantages to extending the agreement, a sentiment Fisher echoed. That was a direct quote. See, the fiscal advantage seems to be the only main concern that the council or some council members are concerned with, not what is best for the community. The fairgrounds is the asset for the community. That is the advantage. That is what we need to protect. What they said is also inaccurate and false. The fairgrounds contributes over 12 million per year, 12 million per year to the local community. The city must provide a long-term lease for the fairgrounds now. We are trying to provide a future for our kids and a future for the community that we grew up in.
Thank you for your comments tonight, Joe. Next speaker is Taran Obaid, followed by Nicole C. Taran, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Thank you. Citizens warned against Telecom Law Firm for over six months, providing evidence of conflict of interest and of many cities that, after discovering Telecom Law Firm's misguidance, dismissed them and overturned their work. We now know that the city has hired Telecom Law Firm. This is a big risk. It's a big risk because Telecom Law Firm is a Trojan horse consultancy. Their MO is to gain entry into a city through a project and then proceed to spread fear, uncertainty, and doubt by obfuscating federal and FCC jurisdiction and telling cities their hands are tied. Instilling an attitude of compromise, they lay the groundwork to bake industry bias into cities' operations and ordinances. Madam Mayor and City Council, citizens now are looking to you for a real solution. We look to you to prevent the baking in of bias and misguidance on this highly technical and highly complex project. Looking to you because pardon us, and with all due respect, we are neither satisfied with nor inclined to trust Eric Danley's vague assurances. Because foundational errors and misguidance persisted clear through to the final Creamery hearing documents, the staff report, the drive test report, the resolution, flawed. City Council, we are now counting on you for a real solution, a solution that ensures Petaluma gets the strongest, watertight ordinance that we deserve per our full legal rights. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you, Taran. Next speaker is Nicole C., followed by Amelia Packard. Nicole, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Hi, my name's Nicole Camarda. Love the cahoots presentation, and I'm really excited about that. I, tonight I want to talk about e-bikes. I watched the Sonoma Clean Power Electric Bike presentation, and I'm really thankful and excited about the rebate program they're offering and encouraging e-bikes as an alternative mode of transportation. But this presentation also showed that Class 3 e-bikes, the ones that reach 28 miles per hour, are not allowed on Class 1 bike paths, and e-bikes are not allowed on Golden Gate Transit buses or ferries. In doing further research, I've learned that SMART may prohibit e-bikes on their multi-use pathways. The last mile continues to be one of SMART's most prohibitive issues aside from scheduling and costs. We must make sure that all bikes are allowed on multi-use paths, our Lynch Creek Trail, wherever they're going to help people get out of their cars and an alternative mode of transportation. So if you sit on Sonoma County Transit or SMART, or you're working with TAM or MTC, please, please continue to advocate for e-bike access. If you sit on the Bike Imped Transit Advisory Committee, Parks and Rec Committee, or the Climate Commission, please continue to advocate and protect e-bike access. Lastly, I want to encourage the city to immediately get signage out to direct westbound cyclists to take South McDowell to Lombardi, which is a slow street, and take Payran back to West Petaluma. Every day I see cyclists riding westbound on Lakeville, and they are not protected and extremely unsafe. So I will send these comments to other committees as well, but please, if you sit on any of these commissions or agencies or institutions, advocate for e-bike access. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Next speaker is Amelia Packard, followed by Risa Tinsley-Green. Amelia, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
My name is Amelia Packard. I'm 17 years old, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Petaluma Youth for Cahoots. We want to offer our ecstatic and enthusiastic support for the process of assessing, developing, and implementing a cahoots program in Petaluma. If the PPD and Cahoots consultant, Ben Adam Clymer, would please, please reach out to us so that we can be a part of this process and gain more transparency, specifically regarding police call statistics, that would be greatly appreciated. We are deeply passionate about radically reevaluating policing in this town and would love to bring our perspective to the table. I want to thank the council for being so responsive to the requests of its citizens towards a more equitable future, and I look forward to seeing immediate and concrete changes in our policing tactics and budget distributions. You can reach out to us at petalumayouthforcahoots@gmail.com. That's petalumayouth, the number four, cahoots, at gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia. The next speaker is Risa Tinsley-Green, followed by Eric Leland, who will be our last speaker tonight. Risa, you may- who will be our last speaker tonight. Risa, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Hi, my name's Risa Tinsley-Green. I'm also commenting on behalf of Petaluma Youth for Cahoots. Just going off of what Amelia was saying, we're just really thrilled and really appreciative of Ben for coming and giving his presentation. And we're super excited that we're getting such a close and immediate timeline on getting a cahoots program and just want to again reiterate our support for that and offer up ourselves as a resource. We have a fair amount of members and a great deal of passion and energy going towards this issue and would love to be even more a part of the process going forward and just really do whatever we can to help in the organization and planning and whatever is needed. So yeah, just, I don't know if Ben's still listening. I don't know if he got scared off and had to go or whatever, but just encourage him to reach out to us or anybody, hi, anybody to reach out to us again at Petaluma Youth, the number four, cahoots@gmail.com, just so we can be more a part of this process going forward. And yeah, just really thrilled about the conversation tonight. Thank you.
Here is Risa. And our next speaker is Eric Leland. Eric, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Thank you. And thank you for this excellent presentation on non-police crisis response. Thanks, Ben, for the presentation. I had just several questions I want to ask. Apologies if I missed this in the presentation, but who supervises cahoots in this model? I strongly recommend prioritizing the independence of this new program. Another question, is there a possibility that the crisis counseling training could be open to the public? There's a number of members of this community who volunteer in things such as crisis mitigation, homelessness, and are in some way working as a psychologist or with psychologists and social work agencies. They may be interested to know how best to approach these crisis situations, you know, beyond what cahoots would do, just sort of as a community measure. How are Eugene and other towns that have run cahoots for multiple years now providing ongoing training and support for keeping these non-crisis skills up to date and also engaging the community in those skills in the same manner of keeping them up to date? I wanted to echo Amelia and Petaluma Youth for Cahoots. Basically, who were the five organizations interviewed so far and what's the plan for interviewing more organizations? And then one final thought I had was it would be great that the program's designed with a really strong dispatch that knows how to assign cases to cahoots. I know that's part of the model, but it sounds like in the case of Eugene, a lot of, the majority of calls are actually coming in and specifically requesting cahoots. And it'd be really nice if the public doesn't have to remember to do that so that over time it just becomes make the call, you have a crisis, and the dispatchers really know what to do. This is super exciting. So thank you so much and have a great night.
Thank you, Eric, for those comments. And thank you all members of the public for taking the time tonight to speak to the council. Madam Mayor, that's the last hand we have raised and I will turn it back to you.
Thank you very much, Patrick. And with that, we'll close public comment. And we, it appears we had several really good comments. And I'm pretty certain that we have been able to take down the email address for the Petaluma Youth for Cahoots. So I certainly took it down. So if we don't have it, I'm sure it'll be in the record. And I think that would be an excellent connection to make, as was made earlier by someone on the council. And also I think the comments by Mr. Leland are comments that, you know, would be interesting to have forwarded to Mr. Klimer, who I see is still on the call, even though he has muted and turned off his video. But so I think he's probably been able to get that information as well. So thank you, everybody, for those comments. So now we are moving into council comment. I'll start with Mr. Healy.
I see the city attorney has his hand raised. Did you want to call on him first?
I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Yes, Eric Danley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Healy. I don't mean to usurp the council members' comments. I have some brief remarks I'd like to provide in response to the comments we heard tonight regarding telecommunications issues, but if the council wishes to make its comments first, I can come later or?
Continue.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I want to touch on a few points tonight briefly so the meeting can continue and we can get the council members' comments. First of all, the assertions by members of the public regarding conflicts of interest of the telecom law group regarding their purported representation of telecom providers are factually false. They appear to be based on a fundamental misunderstanding of the rules of professional responsibility that apply to attorneys in California. We attorneys are prohibited by the rules from representing clients with adverse interests to present or former clients without disclosing those in writing and receiving a waiver. And some conflicts, such as those of present clients with adverse interests, are not even waivable. So if those allegations were true, then any firm with those conflicts would be subject to discipline and potential liability. There also seem to be some misunderstandings about the role of the city's legal advisors and my role and the council's role and as the city's legislative body. So I'm responsible for the legal advice the city receives, whether it's provided by me or a member of my office or by special counsel. I never abdicate that role, even though the breadth and scope of the issues with which the city deals does require us to use highly qualified special counsel to advise the city council in its decision-making role. It's the council that is the decision-maker, not its legal advisors or its staff advisors. It's staff's job, my job and the rest of staff, to make sure the council is fully apprised of its legislative options when it's contemplating new legislation or updated legislation in the municipal code. And so with respect to telecom, regulatory updates that the council has indicated it would like to be presented, we will work with our team, the city staff will work with the team that we've put together regarding these issues to fully apprise the council of its regulatory options so that it is in a position to make its legislative choices. And we will do so to protect the public safety and preserve the council's legislative and decision-making prerogatives, just as we've done with respect to the Verizon application. With respect to that and some of the comments that were heard tonight, I want to make mention of a couple things that have been asserted sort of substantively about the law. One is that, one has been that the Verizon application should have been, should have been evaluated in terms of an obligation on part of the applicant to demonstrate a significant gap in service. That's incorrect because that is not a requirement of the city's regulations and the city's processing of telecommunications applications need to be based on the city's existing code. Another assertion that has been made is that the city is able to regulate radio frequency emissions. And that is not true to the extent those emissions are within FCC guidelines. To the extent they are, we're completely preempted from regulating those. So hopefully that is helpful clarification for the council. If you have, you know, follow-up questions or directions for us, I'd be happy to receive those. But thanks for the chance to address those.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, so now we'll go back to Councilmember Healy.
Thank you. So I have two liaison reports briefly. The Petaluma Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency met last Thursday. We're still on track to have a sustainability plan for our groundwater basin submitted to the state by the end of January of next year, which is the deadline. And that should be available for council review this fall. And there's a lot of complex subparts to that that you will see this fall. The mayors and council members Legislative Committee met on Friday and we talked about various bills that have been introduced in Sacramento so far. At this point, there are about 400 bills on housing alone. I'll go through those briefly for you. I'm kidding. One to keep an eye on though is SB 9 by Senator Atkins, which would make duplexes available ministerially by right in single-family zoning. The League Board of Directors has proposed 11 amendments to that. The most important ones centering on whether ADUs and junior ADUs would be part of that as well. So stay tuned on that. Senator Dodd, on a lighter note, has a bill introduced that would make to-go drinks from restaurants, which we've been experiencing in the pandemic, permanent. That's an interesting concept. And then one of the features of these meetings is the city's city representatives go around and talk about what's new in their jurisdictions. And one thing that was mentioned on Friday that I think would be of interest to this group, City of Hillsburg has just flipped the switch on what they are claiming is the largest solar photovoltaic installation in the Western United States. And Windsor is disappointed to being downgraded to second place. But once again, that's an issue that I think is of great interest in our city and I would like to see staff reach out to Hillsburg and Windsor to pursue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McDonald?
Thank you very much, and a mayor. I just want to report back on my assignment to the continuum of care. The county's had required system of care for homelessness. We meant last week to try and determine funding allocations and we're facing 30% cuts in homelessness. But at the last minute, the county has received CARES funding and has postponed decisions for a week to our next meeting. And we hope to be able to fund all the programs at 100%. So that was a pretty good notice from the county there. And I'd like to give out a shout to the Know Before You Grow people. And they hosted their first general plan informational meeting. They had over 50 people in attendance. And yes, they got Zoom bombed, but they were able to continue. And their next session is next Wednesday, March 10th, and it's on housing. So that'll be a valuable community interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Neither of, none of my appointments met this past week. However, I did have a chance on Friday to attend a webinar presented by the CAL CCA, with CCA standing for Community Choice Aggregates, which is a statewide organization that Sonoma Clean Power is part of, on offshore wind power and its role in our future electrical needs. Very interesting. I think there's going to be a fair, fair amount of steps to get to it in the Pacific, but it's happening a bit in the Atlantic at the moment in terms of projects in construction and under design and so forth. So it's very interesting and probably going to be something that will help ultimately diversify here in the North Bay some of our electrical power portfolio. And my other comment is kind of related to our presentation, is that, you know, we're going to be have to be working with our dispatchers quite a bit on this. I think the last commenter, Mr. Leland, made a solid point there. There's going to be a lot of burden on those individuals in making their calls. And to the degree that we are looking at funding going forward in that regard, I think there may be something that has to be looked at there. I of course would defer to the professionals on this, but it just seems like if 90% of these calls are going to have to be divined out to be crisis, mental health crisis versus traditional policing, that the person at the pivot there is going to be our dispatchers. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So now we'll go to Vice Mayor Barnacle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My report out is from the Ag and Open Space Advisory Committee. I had my first meeting on that and it was great. We learned about the new communications and website from the Ag and Open Space District, which I think is, they've done a really great job and they've got a great plan for communications that works with the community. We also got to approve the matching grant proposals for the county, which was really nice to see. There's a lot of really great projects, including here locally. Crane Creek and Runner Park is going to be connected all the way down to Runner Park with a path, 75 acres dedicated there, which is really cool. There's a really interesting project going in up in Hillsburg that's going to connect a couple of trails and provide access to some communities that are currently pretty isolated. And here in Petaluma, the Petaluma River Park Foundation received a $1 million matching grant to support continued rehabilitation and work at that site. So that was really great. One note on that, one of the projects that didn't get approved was the, a group called Protect Petaluma that submitted a matching grant for a parcel of the Sid Commons Project. The Sid Commons Project, it was, it was sort of interesting because in some categories, like in environmental attributes and the sort of the qualitative aspects of it, it scored extremely high. And with, and then they have a category called readiness. And in the readiness category, it scored very low, lower than any of the other applications. But what it showed me, and when I asked what happened, they said that it was that the city hadn't submitted a letter with the project. And it was interesting because the landowner expressed apparently that they were open to a sale of the property to settle the lawsuit. And so if there is a path to settling that suit through acquisition, something that may, may of interest to the council. I sent a message today internally on divesting from Calpers. I found an organization that is doing a campaign for that. And there is a draft resolution. I'd love to see the divest Calpers resolution come before the council and have us support that on the, on the climate front. I was, a couple weeks ago, this is a little bit back that I didn't get to announce it, but I was at the ribbon cutting for a DC fast charger out in the county at Two Rock Station out by the Two Rock Fire Department. So if you're ever about to run out of juice on the way out to or from the coast, please stop at Two Rock Station and take a picture, tag yourself, post it to Instagram. I also, I got an e-bike this, this weekend. I was able to get from my house right by City Hall across the city to the Safeway parking lot in nine minutes. So pretty interesting. I, I think that the speaker, Nicole, who mentioned e-bikes was spot on that we need to be advocating for them. They're forecasting somewhere between 70 to 100% year-over-year growth in the United States. And they're not bikes and they're not vehicles. And we need to start thinking about how to incorporate them en masse. And they're, they're really a fantastic mobility option for so many people. And with 70% of the trips in Petaluma being under five miles and starting and ending in our city, we should absolutely propose, promoting e-bikes in our city in every way that we can and advocating that SMART do the same with its multi-use paths. Finally, on the floating solar, I agree with Councilmember Healy that we should be looking at it. I had, after my meeting with the water reuse board that I'm a part of, I sent a message to the program officer there about, to see if there was any interest in a joint procurement with the other water districts to see if we can get, you know, better pricing or something like that, if we all run a common RFP. And I'm not sure. But he said that it was within the scope of the group. And I'm not sure, um, but he said that it was within the, the scope of the group, and he would talk to the subcommittee and get back. So I, I definitely agree with Councilmember Healy that we want to see some, some action on that. So that's my report out.
Thank you. Um, and Councilmember Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I have one report out on my liaison assignment, and that is the Planning Commission met last week. Um, and we um, we looked at the site plan and architectural review for the 36th unit Casa Grande project, um, which was then approved. So that's the final entitlement for that project. Uh, and then the second thing on that agenda was a presentation on Senate Bill 330, which apparently went into effect in January of last year. And it's really intended to facilitate the approval of housing projects. So we've got a new application process in the city that they're, that they're creating for that. And um, and I just want to mention, apparently our um, ban on fossil fuel stations is the first in the nation. Um, and it's getting some attention. So, thank you.
Thank you. And um, now we'll go to Councilmember Posik.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had one meeting of the Youth Commission, uh, where we continued to work on the Youth Commission's website as well as a um, a little bit of an art contest to um, bring in the, the work students have done in large part to help them through the COVID pandemic. Uh, that's, that's, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. And um, I have not had any liaison report uh, meetings in the last week, uh, but I was able to attend the um, Black History Month celebration for, that is traditionally held on the last Saturday of the month. And I noticed that several members, almost a majority of the council members were there, um, which I think is wonderful. And um, I, I'm, I'm grateful for that because the city was a cosponsor of this year's celebration. And um, given that the pandemic limited so much, it was really wonderful to see how um, how good the um, the production was of this annual event. And uh, the really great news about that is that it is going to be available as a video uh, on the Petaluma's for Black, uh, Black Petaluma's for Community Development site. So I really, really urge people to see it because um, uh, because of the pandemic, the jazz ensemble that usually kicks off Black History Month was not able to perform at the uh, Historical Museum. And uh, it was interwoven with this action, with this performance on, on Saturday. It, it was really a terrific event, and I really hope everybody gets an opportunity to see it and that we uh, are able to support more of this kind of work in our city. Um, so the other thing is that um, uh, for the second year in a row, I have uh, signed on to the mayor's, the National Mayor's Challenge for uh, Water Conservation. And given the um, presentation we had at the beginning of this meeting, uh, I, I think I heard the words uh, "very dry year" several times. And um, we really need to continue doing the good work we're doing, but actually make an effort to do even more. Uh, so um, we'll be hearing more of that as we go forward. And I also just want to give a shout out to our city manager who just celebrated her second anniversary here at the city. So with that, we will hear the city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh, congratulations on your second year and, and Councilmember Fishers and Councilmember McDonald's as well. Uh, and I would echo your comments about the Black History Month Celebration um, put on by Blacks for Community Development. Um, I was such a large showing of our community. I also know that the Chief of Police uh, was also in attendance in, in, in addition to the council members, really, really enjoyed it. Wanted to um, ask that Nicole C. send her comments to me about the Class III e-bikes and the signage. Um, would like to pass that on to staff. Um, did connect Amelia and Risa to Ben, and Ben has already responded. So we are um, we've made that connection. And then to Mr. Leland's questions, uh, we have your email, Eric, and we will be um, connecting you to Ben and, and answer your questions. Just wanted to invite the community um, Monday, March 8th for um, uh, for a workshop at 6:00 PM, where uh, staff will be uh, sharing um, our thoughts on Measure U implementation. And it'll be, it'll be a night chock-a-block full of the last three months regarding our Measure U. Um, and we would love to have the community there uh, to hear um, what our proposal is. And so that is next Monday, uh, March 8th, and it starts at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And um, with that, we were, we will go on to approval of the proposed agendas, um, of which our city manager just gave us a sneak peek of the workshop that is on, on Monday, the 8th, starting at 6:00 PM on the implementation of Measure U. And the second uh, proposed agenda is for the regular city council meeting on March 15th. Um, Councilmember Fisher.
Uh, I think Councilmember Healy had his hand up first to make a motion.
No, I can only look up and see what I'm seeing. So if you want to make a motion, go ahead, and then I'll ask Mr. Healy to second it.
I'll go ahead and move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Healy.
Um, I, I would move approval, but with respect to the March 15 agenda, I would propose adding Vice Mayor Barnacle's um, proposal requesting Calpers to divest themselves of fossil fuel investments. So that's a friendly amendment.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Yes, it is. And so um, with that, we will have a roll call vote.
Barrett?
Yes.
Barnacle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Posik?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And um, now we will move on to the consent calendar. Um, we have three items on the consent calendar. Does anybody on the council want to pull any of those items? Seeing no one raise their hand, um, I will ask the city clerk if there has been any public comment on any of those items.
Madam Mayor, yes, we received one public comment on item 3B and two public comments on item 3C.
Okay, thank you. And um, I will ask our moderator to see if there's anyone in the public who would like to speak to this, and we will open public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I already see a couple of hands raised. So uh, members of the public wishing to speak on the consent calendar, please raise your hand in Zoom or dial star nine on your phone uh, to make comments on this item. You'll have three minutes in which to give your comments. And just to remember, reminder that speakers are encouraged to be respectful and that threats of violence and obscenity are grounds for removal from this meeting. So at this point, I see three hands raised. The first is Josh Simmons, followed by Dwayne. Josh, I will allow you to speak. You may unmute yourself to begin speaking.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, City Council and city staff. Um, I just wanted to share a little additional detail uh, with relation to uh, item 3C, which I'm very excited about. Um, specifically the comments I raised about the EV chargers. Um, for people who can't charge at home or at work using a DC fast charger during a shopping trip or visiting a park is really the only way to keep their, their vehicle fueled. In Petaluma, there are 20 DC fast charging connectors available uh, under the Tesla network, and only seven available for cars made by other manufacturers. Uh, just to underscore what I, I mentioned previously at that last meeting was that Tesla cars are some, among the most expensive EVs available, um, even in the, the used market. Uh, so making more connectors and chargers available for lower-cost EV cars using the standard connectors um, is, is an equity issue. Now, I also want to point out that uh, while there are adapters that let Tesla cars connect to open standard DC fast chargers, even if there were adapters to allow other cars to physically connect to different make of the car, to a Tesla charger, the software in the Tesla chargers will refuse to provide power to those cars. So there's, they, they don't play nice with other vehicles, whether you've got an adapter or not, unfortunately. Um, that has been solved by legislation elsewhere, elsewhere in the world. I don't know if that's an option for us. Anywho, I would just ask that uh, at some point, the city agendizes or considers an ordinance in which we ask that at least 50% of DC chargers at uh, charging stations be, use the open standard so that we have at least as many available for uh, literally every brand in the world other than Tesla. Uh, and that is all I have to say on that comment. Uh, thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you for those comments. Uh, Josh, next speaker is Dwayne, followed by Rebecca Carpenter. Dwayne, you may unmute yourself.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening. Yes, I also would, would like to speak on 3C. And reading over the regulations adopted, unless I missed something, um, talking about 22.035, uh, suggests there's certain rules that are being adopted regarding conversion of gas stations to um, hydrogen, hydrogen stations. And whereas there's a slim possibility that a gas, a hydrogen station could leak hydrogen. And whereas we have one in town that's caused quite a bit of controversy with gasoline across within um, 100 yards of a school, you'd think you'd put the regulation in place before the problem arises with hydrogen. Would put the regulation in place in, in the 22.035, saying that you cannot put a hydrogen fueling station within 100 yards of a school. And it would, it would eliminate the possibility of such a controversy coming up in the future. And pre-planning this way would, would save uh, the parents a lot of concern and save everybody else a lot of work. So I'd, I'd really appreciate if that prohibition uh, near schools was added as a one-liner to your law. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Dwayne. Next speaker is Rebecca Carpenter. Rebecca, you may unmute yourself.
Um, yes, uh, what Dwayne said, um, ditto that. Um, also, I wanted to draw attention to item, the attachment piece C in Natalie McKay's letter states a falsehood and says the opposition to the gas, Safeway gas station was stirred by competitor gas stations, and that is completely untrue. The opposition to the Safeway gas station is all about keeping the children safe from a toxic, toxic environment, keeping the kids in the preschool, the kids in the great, the elementary school, the residents around there to keep them safe. That is the one driving force. That's all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Rebecca. And Madam Mayor, that's all the hands I have raised, so I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Patrick. And with that, we will close public comment on these items. And I would like to ask um, either Heather Hines or our city attorney regarding the question about prohibition of hydrogen near schools. Is that taken care of by our um, addition of the conditional use permit?
I've, I think, Madam Mayor, I think that that was one of the, the reasons uh, for adding the conditional use requirement because then it gives us greater discretion to look at them on a case-by-case basis as it comes up. Where um, in previous considerations, when it has just been a site plan and architectural review as the discretion, there has been more limited ability for the city to look at um, the operations or um, the equipment, some of those, those pieces. So I think, um, and Eric, please add if you have anything additional. But I believe that the conditional use permit gives us the, the discretion that, that will be helpful in that type of situation.
It does.
Oh, okay. All right, good. That, that is what I thought was the intent, and I just wanted to make sure that that is what we, we are getting.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And in response to that, a couple of other quick things. One is that um, under the McCorkle case, which we've talked about a number of times um, at the city council meetings, um, a CUP um, means that it's, it's a discretionary enough action that the entire um, uh, SEQA is available to the council to the extent SEQA otherwise applies. Um, the other thing I would mention is that if the council were to amend the ordinance after its introduction, it would need to be reintroduced if it's a substantive amendment. Um, I also have one thing to which I wanted to respond in the letter we received from Safeway regarding the second reading. And I, there's, there's something I also wanted to raise to the council with respect to the, the weed item, um, when you'd like me to do those things. Thank you.
I think now would be a good time.
Okay. So um, since we're, we're talking about the um, second reading, maybe I'll start with that first. Um, the letter we received um, from Safeway shortly before tonight's meeting um, raises um, essentially the same arguments that their prior um, submission shortly before the first reading did, um, with one additional item to which I wanted to respond. Um, and that is on page two of the letter. It asserts, and it, it discusses Government Code Section 65857 regarding um, amendments such as that Councilmember Healy would um, introduce to require CUP regarding um, hydrogen fueling stations. Um, um, the, the letter argues that, that, that um, that should be remanded, that consideration of that should be remanded to um, to Planning Commission. However, Petaluma's a charter city, and um, the home will power applies to uh, land use regulations. And our zoning code provides in Section 25.080 that um, if the city council proposes to alter a proposed zoning amendment recommended by the Planning Commission, um, the city council in its sole discretion may either refer the proposed altered amendment back to the Planning Commission for reporting recommendation before adoption, or adopt a proposed altered amendment. So under the city's home will power, um, notwithstanding the government code provision that's, that's discussed in the Safeway letter, the council um, doesn't have to refer that back to the Planning Commission. And otherwise, we've, I think I addressed in my comments um, when that ordinance was introduced, the other issues raised in the, in this, in the Safeway letter. Um, would you like me to comment on the, on the weed item now to you, Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
So, thank you. We just have a quick request regarding that item um, that will facilitate the process going forward. Um, we'd like to propose a couple amendments to the resolution if, if it's, if the council, if that's acceptable to the council. So the first would be to add a second recital to the resolution. This is on page five of that agenda item that would read, "Whereas weeds may be seasonal and recurrent nuisances which require multiple abatements in a season to reduce the fire threats presented by the weeds," semicolon, "and." And then we'd like to request that a new Action Item 5 be added at the end of the reso that would read as follows. "The weeds on the parcels listed in Exhibit A are seasonal and recurrent nuisances, and upon the second and any subsequent occurrence of such nuisance on the same parcels within the same calendar year shall be abated in conformance with Government Code Section 39562.1." And the reason we're suggesting that change is, it's, it's, it's almost evident from the language itself, is to provide the ability to um, potentially abate weeds on parcels and avoid the fire danger that's related to them multiple times, um, while, while still being able to do that within that, that year's cycle. So if there are questions, I'd be happy to address them. Um, that's our suggestion for that item. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that uh, clarification. And um, I thought I saw um, Councilmember King and Fisher's hands up before. Um, so I will go back. Well, Councilmember Fisher has her hand up, so.
Well, I, I was gonna put back up to go ahead and move the consent calendar. And also to let you know that as the liaison to the Planning Commission, we did report back out to them changes that we made in the, in the fossil fuel ordinance.
Okay, and um, are, in moving the consent calendar, are you moving it with the recommendations of the uh, city attorney?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we have a motion by Fisher and a second by King, and we will have a roll call vote.
Barrett?
Yes.
Barnacle?
Barnacle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Posake?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And now we're moving on to the public hearing. And this is a resolution accepting the housing element progress report for the 2020 calendar year and direction to staff to submit the report to the state of California Department of Housing and Community Development and the State Office Planning and Research. So we will have our housing director Karen Shimizu.
See, let me share my screen here. Okay, here we go. Got it? Okay. Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. This evening, I'm here, I'm going to present the highlights of our housing element progress report. And this evening, we're going to be talking about accepting the annual report outlining the progress towards meeting the fifth cycle RENA numbers, receiving public comments, and approving a resolution. So as we get started, the background for our housing element, it was adopted by the city and certified for the 2015-23 planning cycle by HCD. For the city to maintain conditions of having a certified housing element with HCD and qualify for certain additional funding opportunities, Petaluma is required to submit an annual progress report that conforms to the state required reporting format. This includes number of building permits issued, completed housing entitlements, pipeline projects, and a housing unit forecast. So let's start looking at some of the numbers. This chart provides a snapshot by year of the number of building permits issued for each of the four income categories. When you take a look at it, the city has exceeded the above moderate range at three hundred and five percent and met the moderate income at a hundred percent. The city will likely meet or exceed the eight-year goal of the 1523 RENA cycle. I want to emphasize again, this chart reflects the fifth year and an eighth year cycle, so we still have time to get the work completed. In 2020, we satisfied the city's moderate income RENA numbers. The city also achieved great strides towards the low and very low income targets with the largest single year in both categories since the start of the fifth cycle. While there is still room for improvement with these numbers, it is important to also look at approved entitlements in 2020 and see what units may come online in the next two years to help Petaluma fulfill the RENA numbers for the cycle. As we look at this, this is the completed housing entitlements, and this is for the year of 2020 only. So it provides a list of housing units that received entitlements and have the potential to be completed prior to the close of the current RENA cycle. The city is doing its part to streamline affordable housing projects and approve several projects in 2020 that are continually improving our numbers. You take a look at the projects, we have the Riverbend, a for sale property, one of the first projects to prove under the inclusionary housing regulations that were adopted in 2018. We have Mid Penn and Burbank project, were both approved with SB thirty-five streamlined approvals. While the developers are still working on the project financing, please note that with affordable housing, you must have the project entitlements in order to be competitive for the housing funding. I also want to highlight on this chart that we referenced the Mid Penn project as forty-two low-income units. The AMI range is between thirty to sixty percent. The final financing structure will drive the final unit mix. As another, as a last note on that, please note that based on HCC guidance and state reporting guidelines, Corona Station has been included in the completed entitlement numbers on this chart. But we did not include them in our summary numbers that you'll see reflected in table four. And that is due to the entitlements being rescinded. HCD wanted us to list them because they were approved, even though we talked with them and they've been rescinded. The next chart, we take a look at pipeline projects. So what is the difference between table two and table three? Pipeline is either approved projects from 2019 that have not pulled building permits or and projects that are submitted and being reviewed but have not received approval. So you can see there's some projects that are approved and there's some projects that are still listed in process. The key to this table is that it gives us a slightly broader look at what's coming. But there's also a higher degree of uncertainty because approved projects can be stalled or projects are still in process and have not received approvals. So an example of this, as you'll see, we've included the Hines Downtown Development, which has a significant number of units. The project is still listed as in process, but the project outcome is uncertain. Again, HCD has guidelines on how to report our progress. The city's been working hard on several affordable housing projects. So here, I wanted to talk about some of the great work that's been achieved. So this is a picture of the Pep River City Senior Housing. It's a great aerial shot that's currently under construction. That will provide fifty-four units of low and very low income senior housing. The city contributed the land and one million in funding from the Inlu Housing Fund. We also have our Mid Penn project in the works. It's located at four one four Petaluma Boulevard North. It'll provide forty-two units of multifamily housing for households with incomes between thirty to sixty percent AMI. The city provided funding in the amount of one point two million of housing in lieu funds and nine hundred thousand of home program funding that we're currently working on an application with them. Another project is Burbank Housing. Projects located at sixteen oh one Petaluma Boulevard South and will provide fifty units of housing. Burbank is currently pursuing funding for the project. Our last affordable housing development I'll speak of tonight is Meridian at Corona Station, a proposed hundred and thirty-one unit project for low and very low income residents. The city is working in partnership and exploring funding opportunities that would support infrastructure and transit amenities around the site. Lots of great work happening. So here's our summary table. So how are we really doing at meeting our RENA numbers? This is a culmination of the other tables. If everything was approved and building permits were issued, this is what our ultimate RENA numbers would look like. While not likely that all of the developments will fall into place, this demonstrates that the city and the city team is encouraging and processing housing applications. I would also like to note that because of our inclusionary housing requirement is correlated to fifteen percent of market rate housing, that the above moderate is going to be much higher in order to achieve the very low, low and moderate units we need to satisfy our RENA numbers. So while I've talked about the housing numbers and units that we've brought online, I wanted to focus a little bit and talk about the policies and the programs that the city has been implementing. So around housing development, our planning team has been very busy. Staff continues to look for regulatory impediments to housing development and the zoning process. Recently, the city processed two SB thirty-five applications for Burbank and Mid Penn. They also processed an AV twenty-one sixty-two application for the Danko project. Those are all streamlined approval processes. All three projects were successfully approved. The city was awarded an SB three grant and is in the process of working on objective design standards. The city received funding through the state LEAP grant, which provided the funding to participate in the technical advisory panel through the Urban Land Institute to look at barriers to housing development. The city amended the inclusionary housing requirement and continues to administer the commercial linkage fee program. But let's shift and let's talk about some of the program or the programs that the city has funded. The city was recently awarded an additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the CDBG COVID program. That program is being administered, providing essential rental assistance to our low-income community members in partnership with PPSC and COTS. We also increased our partnership with the Housing Land Trust to provide stewardship to our homeowners, including support with refinancing due to the economic impacts of COVID to ensure that our homeowners didn't lose their housing. New partnerships were formed and expanded that are focused on serving unsheltered members of the community. Examples are our partnership with Downtown Street Team and COTS. They had the ability to increase staffing, increase housing placement, job training, debris removal, and the cleanup of the waterways. So with that, that's a report out on our activities, but I do want to acknowledge the many city staff members that it takes to do this work, the community members, and the nonprofit organizations that all work as a team to achieve this. And with that, it is recommended that the city council approve a resolution accepting the annual housing element progress report for 2020 and direct staff to submit the report to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning. And I would be more than happy with other staff to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A really good report. Okay, so are there any questions from city council members? Okay, I see a couple hands. Council member McDonald, followed by council member Healy.
Thank you very much. I'm looking at this chart and there's it's wonderful work and I appreciate the report. There's a couple fundamentals I have to ask. The RENA cycle that is shown is six different years. And yet we still have twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And we keep saying eight years. Where's the math in that? Eight years or nine years?
It should be, oh, Heather. Well, our new six-cycle housing element needs to be adopted and submitted by January 2023. So it would be, we have twenty-one and twenty-two ahead of us. By the beginning of 2023, we will adopt our new housing element.
Okay, so this one doesn't include the data from twenty, won't include data from twenty-three?
Right, so it's eight years.
That really gives us a much shorter timeline to try and hit these targets for things that are incomplete in there. And then there's so many projects with the name River in them. The Riverview with two hundred and sixty-four, which project is that one?
That is the project at the Terminus of Casa Grande, next to Rocky Dog Park.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I don't see the Ellis Street Apartments in any of the tables. And we got an affordable unit out of those guys, so.
Yes, we did get an affordable unit out of them, and I I do not believe that project is moving forward.
Still doesn't, HCD requires us to report the entitled projects?
Well, it was not entitled in 2020. It was entitled in twenty nineteen, yes.
So it doesn't, we can drop it off the table?
So it doesn't, and I believe I will have to follow up on that, but I believe those entitlements may have since expired on that one because they were not moving forward.
Interesting. Thank you. Also, I note that now we have a non-deed restricted moderate category for ADUs. Is that a law change that we get to allow? How does non-deed restricted get into our tables?
We do get to, and I can't see Karen, so with the screen sharing, so if Karen wants to jump in, Karen, please virtually kick me under the table and I'll be quiet.
That's okay. You're doing great, Heather.
But I do believe, and Karen might be able to offer a little more on this, that we have for the last couple years counted ADUs because they're considered affordable by design at the moderate level, but obviously not deed restricted. But that HCD allows us to count those, and that is something that I know started when Sue Castellucci was in the housing manager position. So it's not new this year or not new in 2020.
We can fill our moderate goals from non-deed restrictives in that RENA category. That's.
We can count them, yes, as non-deed restricted moderate units for our ADUs.
That's fabulous. Also, down at the Riverfront Development, they haven't pulled permits yet for their multifamily effort. Is that?
That is correct. It has not, those are not fully entitled. Those still need site plan and architectural review for the apartments above the retail that wrap around that central green area. So in concept and with the environmental impact report that was certified for that project, they were covered under those, but they still need entitlements for the site plan and architectural review.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Council member Healy, followed by council member King.
Thank you, and I appreciate the great staff report. I just have one question. And that has to do with the Hines Downtown project, and I'm curious how HCD guidelines would allow us to claim that as being in process when at this point we know it's dead because Wellness and Smart have fallen out of contract and that doesn't look like it's gonna get fixed.
So we, that project has not been withdrawn, so it's still technically on our pipeline project. But some of the documentation in the staff report is actually more than is what is included in the HCD report. And the effort there is really to provide the city council with a broader context with the numbers that are included in the HCD report. So all pipeline, I do not believe are actually in the HCD report itself. Karen, is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's the building permits in 2020, the certificates of occupancy in 2020, and the entitlements approved in 2020. And so the pipeline was.
Can you clarify whether Hines is in the HCD report?
I believe it is, yes.
Why would we do that?
Because it's technically a pipeline project. In 2020, it was a pipeline project. It hasn't been withdrawn, so.
Even though it's dead?
If tell it is withdrawn, it's not technically dead from a procedural standpoint.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council member King?
Just thank you, Madam Mayor. Mike, I have a combination comment and question. The report is fine and I'll be voting to send it on along. But it's very clear that the one category we have historically, at least in recent history, fallen short on is the very low. And what I'm interested is trying to figure out, we receive a lot of explanation for why, from builders, from nonprofits, from people who are in the know, whether we can have at some point as a council and a community, some information, whether it's in the form of a presentation or a workshop or even a treatise that we can read to see if there's a way around this, what is a fairly intractable problem. And, you know, aside from the reporting obligations and the arena demand, it is also something that is in the best interest of our citizens to have low-income, lower-income housing or housing that lower-income people can live in on so many levels. And I'm not going to get into the detail because I know it would take forever. It's kind of like council member Healy, four hundred bills. It's kind of like Councilmember Healy, 400 bills, but there are many, many reasons for this. So I, my ask is for us to consider, or staff to consider, whether it's through the Urban Land Institute or other organizations that deal with this, to get some information so that we can start to shape a policy that may move this in a better direction. I'm not sure that that's feasible. I, from everything I've heard, it's very difficult. It's obviously a problem with many of the developments that come forward to us, but it's certainly something that we are not achieving, and it's something I think we should be achieving. So those are my comments. Thank you. And, and the report is, it has nothing to do with the report. The report, the report of the facts.
Thank you. Councilmember King, those are very, those are great comments. Thank you for bringing that up. There's been a lot of discussion. We're not the only jurisdiction that's alone, trying to figure out how do we build and finance those affordable units. There has been some discussion among staff of coming forward with a housing workshop where we can bring forward some of the policies, some of the alternative financing mechanisms that are arising out there, and bring that forward for a full study session with council and the community.
Thank you. And if I could follow up, if we do have that, one of the things we hear from builders, and I'm, this is not a criticism of those folks either, well, here it doesn't quote pencil out, end quote, which is, you know, all right, I get the explanation. I'm a moderately literate economic person, but I, I need to know why. I need to know what, what the, what the hold, I mean, not me personally, as a city, we need to know why, what the holdup is here, because this is, this is one of the most frustrating parts of receiving these reports annually, is at the very bottom category, we are, we fall short. And, and I agree, I, from what I understand, in other jurisdictions, they fall short. There are jurisdictions I see that don't build any housing, and, you know, or any con, you know, consequential housing of any nature, but there has to be a fix to this. I, I'm not convinced that there isn't, and, you know, I would like to know what the, what the real holdups are and whether we can adjust policy to, to, to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought I saw the Vice Mayor. Did you have your hand up?
I did, but I realized that my questions are actually comments, so I'm going to hold until after a public comment.
Okay, fine, thank you. And so Councilmember Posse Kay.
Yes, I, I just wanted to agree with Councilmember King's comments. I really think we need a workshop in this regard, and appreciate the thought that's already been given to that by the staff. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I, this is a public hearing, and I will ask our city clerk if she's received any notices from the public on this item.
Madam Mayor, we have not received any public comments prior to the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So I will ask our city moderator to please see if there's anyone in attendance who would like to speak to this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please raise your hand in Zoom, and you'll be called on in turn. You'll have three minutes in which to give your comments. I see two hands raised right now, and that's Ben P., followed by Dwayne. So Ben, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. A couple comments. I would ask the city explore a policy for very low-income deed-restricted ADUs. The 16 units the city has been able to approve, if we're able, able to get 10% of those to be very low-income deed-restricted, we're doing a lot more housing in that category than we've done for the past couple years. So if there are specific policies to allow or incentivize very low-income ADUs, that's something the city should explore, perhaps as a potential program. Moving on to the report, I will say, because the city has struggled to meet the need, it might be worthwhile to refresh the report and the items or programs mentioned in the report. Having read this report and the one from 2014, it looks like most of the programs are essentially the same with a couple contextual updates. As an example, there is no change to the site inventory list. I really think the city should take another look at the site inventory list. Certainly, it says it's up on the city website. I went to the city website, and there's both not a clear site inventory list that was sort of specified, and then the one that's part of the last-approved housing element doesn't have really all of the housing sites. And in addition, the city owns several parcels that aren't going to be on those sites. And so as a city, we should refresh, what are the opportunity sites to build very low-income housing in our town? The last thing I'll say on the report is that we really shouldn't use affordable housing dollars for HVAC retrofits. This is something I've talked about quite a bit. It's certainly a need to have healthy indoor air and to retrofit all of our heating and air conditioning systems, but we shouldn't use affordable housing dollars to do it. Number one, those are scarce dollars. Number two, the need is greater and can be financed elsewhere, like on electric bills for 0% interest rate. So please stop spending our scarce housing dollars on heating and cooling systems. And then lastly, I do want to say in the, the older report, it talked about the city's first-time homebuyer program. There was the silent second mortgage program. There's three different programs within that, and the number of people that were served from that program, I didn't see that in this report.
Sorry about that, Ben. We'll have to leave it there. Your time expired. Next speaker is Dwayne. Dwayne, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Good, good evening again, Council. Basically, I want to say that a well-crafted report, and, and also I want to thank the Council for their concern for providing housing for people and the, the speech, the talk I've heard. What I wanted to mention, though, about, about this report, about this, the whole program, RENA, is that it's missing what should be a major element, and that is what amount of jobs are being created in Petaluma, and does that match the amount of housing? It does no good for us to be building housing for people whose jobs are an hour's ride from here, when people should be able to walk to work, ride their bike to work, or catch a bus or a train. It, it does no good to build housing here if the jobs are many, many hours away. It destroys families to be on the bus for an hour each way, two hours that they're not with their children, not with their loved ones. And this element is just not covered by RENA. The, the model has failed. It should state how many jobs were created here, and does our housing match the jobs we're creating in Petaluma? Does it match our community? Does it match the students who are growing up here who want to find a house here? Not, does it match what somebody's paying inadequate wages in some distant city, and need to, people need to ride a, a bus to work for an hour? Anyways, I just ask that we, that we include, even though it's not demanded by the state, we include the number of jobs we've created and at what level the jobs are, and do they match the housing? If we, if we are in fact producing a lot of jobs that are minimum wage and they can't afford the housing, let's phrase the minimum wage, not lower the, increase the, the distance traveled. Anyway, just, that's, that's not something you're dealing with tonight so much as a complaint against the nature of the system coming out of Sacramento. They give you figures that seem to be meaningless. They do not apply to Petaluma. They just randomly assign you some numbers and ask you to jump through a hoop. And I, I can complain about it. I guess your, your official report has to address the governor on this issue. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Dwayne. And that is the last hand we have raised, so I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And with that, we can close the public comment and come back to our council for comments. And I see the Vice Mayor has his hand back up for his comments, and then Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, building on what Councilmember King mentioned before, which, speaking my love language, policy, let's look at our policy. I would definitely advocate for a special workshop on housing. In particular, their, their staff report mentions 28 other cities that are currently meeting the RENA, and I think it would be good maybe to, if we could look at what, what city, what those cities are, and if there's anything we can learn from them. Maybe there's something that Gen H could do there, looking at the 28 cities that are meeting the RENA targets and give us a, you know, a debrief on some things that, that maybe they learn. But I'd definitely like to have a special, special session on housing and looking at really the, the policies and programs that are listed at the bottom of the staff report, and which of those need to be refreshed. And, you know, as a, as a person who likes to chase grant money and state money, I'd like to look at the billions of dollars that are coming from housing and community development and see if there's any program funds that we're looking at and how they might match up. I'm really interested in what we can do about the 1,500 or so units that are currently in the pipeline, and if there's ways that we can incentivize a project to become affordable at the very low level. I, I'm, I'm sure you're already doing this, but I, you know, I think one of the things Councilmember King mentioned that also, that always, always frustrates me too, is, is when people say it doesn't pencil. I, I would like to know, you know, what would it take? And in general, when you're working with, you know, applicants, to ask them, what would it take? Because we're in a position to make dreams come, come true, but we need to know what it would take. So, and then the final piece, Mr. Peters mentioned something about using low-income, you know, affordable housing dollars for HVAC retrofits. I'm less concerned about that, but I definitely want to spend those monies. I, I don't want to be installing gas heaters. Those are, you know, that's just another 15 or 20-year expense that we're creating. And so I'd like to, on all the dollars that we're putting out, is remove, you know, take away gas from being allowed. And I'd really like to see some of those block grant funds, and I'm imagining that the federal dollars are going to come, and it's probably, you know, there's probably a good portion of it that'll come in the form of block grants. And I'd really like to see us do something about indoor air quality in rental facilities, and in particular, looking at gas stoves and fan hoods. It's a, a major problem, and the tenants in our community don't have agency to make those changes, and a lot of them fear that if they do advocate for making those changes, they're going to have their rent increased, and that's something that we can both allocate dollars to and enact policy to protect them. And I'd like to do both of those things, something specific. So I know that was a lot. If there's any clarifying questions, I'm happy to answer, but in general, I'm fine with the report, but I just want to see us do a lot more work on this space.
Thank you. Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you very much. Well, policy is right on. That's where the action has to happen. I want to thank staff for all the good programs they're running and all, all the good lives they're touching with those programs to keep good things happening. However, we have a much, much bigger problem. Whatever we're doing, it's not modifying the situation. And so right now, the 15% is bandied about as some sort of a, of a solution. Well, it, it, it's not a solution. It's part of the solution. It's got a lot of value in terms of equity. We need to have that 15%, but that's 15% of new construction, which is only 1% of city growth. We only grow 1% per year in entitlements. So we're talking about 15% of 1%. That's a small number. And there's a tsunami out there, the pressure for house price rising and the speculative market of investing in it and driving that up, the lack of apartments and the rent increases going up, and all these things going up, which means if you have money, you have a solution. If you don't have money, if you're in these lesser income levels, even moderate is being totally priced out, then you're without a solution. 15% is essential, but something different and otherwise is necessary to hang on to any of our middle-class population. So right now, my great concern is gentrification. You look at any $600,000 house, that's probably the bottom of the market, $550 maybe you buy a house. Okay, that's bought, remodeled with money. Those are houses that aren't working class anymore, let alone any, any level less than that. If we have a policy discussion, it's not about the 15% inclusion, because that's a small player. It's about other housing solutions. We don't get our affordable, our affordable housing numbers with just the 15%. We get it because MidPenn comes in with a different project. We need both elements, not one or the other. We need to find a way to get MidPenn funded, not with, if we don't have money in city coffers because we got inclusion built, then MidPenn's other nest egg has to come from outside. We need the county to step up and have a better housing office than they have now. Their, their housing office is non-responsive to local issues. There's, there are good grant programs. That's when energy gets going on. The red that has, happens in Santa Rosa, or what we're doing at the Corona area, but the state is a surplus of money. We have to be at the front line there to bring proposals into Petaluma for affordable housing complex from state money. It's not going to come out of city coffers, not going to come out of county, not going to come out of feds. The state's where the action is. We need to figure out that. Our report is lovely, but it, it, it's a, it's a snapshot of what the existing situation is, and tomorrow's situation looks worse unless we change something. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, you know, it, it is true that, you know, the 15% that, that was sort of hard-fought at, at council to get that for inclusionary housing on new development, you know, it always is just biting around the edge. And, and I think that Councilmember King really tapped into something that, that I've heard from at least a majority of the people who've spoken tonight, and that is, you know, that we actually need to find, you know, make, the Vice Mayor suggested a workshop, and Councilmember King suggested a treatise. And, you know, at some point, there needs to be some kind of study, because unless we find out what is working and where, it, it really, you know, it's, a workshop isn't going to get us anything. You know, we, we really want to know, how can we make developers build what they desperately don't want to build? And, you know, what kind of policy changes do we have to make? What kind of zoning changes do we have to make? You know, the idea that came from a member of the public, I think Mr. Peters, about, you know, just making some kind of policy change so that if you add an ADU that is deeded very low, you know, then, then we can, you know, maybe we can make a deal on that with people. And as you said, you know, these are, again, these are biting around the edges, but we have to do something at every level here, because this is an issue that, that I think it was Councilmember McDonald said is a tsunami. You know, we need this solved yesterday, and this is so off the track of what we're here to talk about, but there is clearly so much interest in our housing element, so much so that it has kick-started an early general plan update. But, but this is, this isn't a huge issue for our town. So I see two more hands up, and I hope one of them will include someone making a resolution. So Councilmember King, followed by Councilmember Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To be clear, I also mentioned either a workshop or a presentation. I have certainly am interested in that, as well as a treatise or other information, as mentioned. And the other comment I'd make is, you know, communication or what state of California for funding, because a lot of this is money. And I mean, let's just face it, it boils down to raw dollars. And, you know, you can pretty it up. Raw dollars. And, you know, you can pretty it up, pretty up the language all you want, but that's what it is. It's an economic decision made by people. Making economic decisions. So, uh, that would be another possible. Piece of the, uh, the presentation workshop, et cetera, and I will move the report.
Thank you. Uh, and so I will ask Councilmember Fisher to speak, and I see that our, uh, planning manager also wants to speak, so. Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
Oh, I will go ahead and second Councilmember King's motion. Um, and, you know, these next two years, while we're developing the new housing element. There's gonna be a lot of opportunity to be talking about all of these issues and, and have the public participation as a part of that, but. You know, it goes beyond that. You know, there's all sorts of things we can do with our zoning regulations. We could have, you know, there's a maximum size to units that you can build in certain places. You know, so that we get smaller, more affordable units that aren't tied to the parking, which then makes the building of them more affordable. So those are just some ideas, and in terms of where housing is, you know, it's not just on vacant lots or under, underutilized lots. Um, at the edges of our city, but you know, how can we be building in our core? Um, on those auto uses that are on our boulevard, for instance, and, um, so I think there's gonna be all sorts of creative things we can do over the next two, two years, and I'm really hopeful that. That we'll get there. Thank you.
And thank you for the seconding the motion, and we will hear from our, uh, planning manager.
Uh, I, actually, Councilmember Fisher kind of touched on what I was gonna touch on, but I just wanted. We've already initiated discussion about a workshop. I'm wishing we had. Kind of queued that up, teed that up in the staff report a little bit more, just to reassure you that we were not. Uh, presenting these numbers without a lot of additional. Next steps and thinking, thinking about, um, both kicking off the six-cycle housing element, but also thinking. What do we do in the next two years, um, to, to be more proactive, to facilitate more housing? We have started talking with other jurisdictions, looking at other examples of inclusionary housing ordinances. So we do have kind of an internal, um, list that we've been talking about, some great feedback from council, and we will kind of regroup and. Look at when we can bring something forward to start talking about policy, um, updates, regulations, funding, all those type of things.
Good. Thank you very much. And so we have a motion by King and a, um, second by Fisher. So we will have a roll call vote.
Eric?
Yes.
Far Nicole?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Healy?
No.
King?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Posake?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Thank you very much, and, um, thank you for this report, and, um, we know we have a lot of work ahead of us. So, uh, with that, uh, we are ready to adjourn the meeting. So good evening, everyone, and we will see you next Monday evening for our workshop on the implementation of Measure U. Thank you. Good night.
Everyone.